I was trying to look and see if we have all the board members. Getting the camera further away from me. Okay. John, Victoria, I thought I said Michelle, or there you are, Michelle. Thanks. Okay, we've got Dr. Nylund, Dr. Norris. Kim is. Joe Mazzola going to be joining us tonight as far as you know?
Yes, he is. I saw that Alex Jones is on the call. I don't see Joe yet, but yes, the plan is that he will join us.
Okay, great.
Hi, this is Alex Jones with Franklin County Public Health. I just received a text from Joe Mazzola and he's having difficulty getting into the meeting. Is there somebody I can direct him to?
Yes, Kim, you want to unmute?
Yes, Kyle Smith, our treasurer, is managing the meeting tonight, and I know he has his email up, so he could email Kyle@kylesmith.
Yeah, if you could text Joe, I'll send him the invite again.
Oh, okay. I'll let him know that Kyle will be sending the invite.
Okay. All right then, I think since it's 6:32, we will get started and wait for Mr. Mazzola can join us when he's able. Let's go back to appreciate everybody's patience as I work this thing. Okay. So we are moving on to our call of order. So in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22 and House Bill 197, I hereby call to order the Board of Education of Bexley City School District Special Board Meeting for Thursday, July 30, 2020. Mr. Smith, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bardo.
You have to unmute.
Here.
Ms. Minio.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here. Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. So now we can move on to Dr. Miller and our superintendent's report for the presentation of our back-to-school plan. Dr. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Snowden, and I will ask Mr. Trill to bring up the PowerPoint that we're going to use. As he's doing that, I just want to remind everybody that this plan is a plan that was developed in collaboration with our teachers, administrators, doctors, nurses, epidemiologists, IT experts, and also many of these people are also parents of students in our school district. And it has been a very, it's a very difficult process. As we all know, we are an in-person school district, and that is how we prefer to provide our services to our students, is in person, but of course, we are living in extraordinary times. We needed to have plans in place to address how we can do learning in the midst of a pandemic. This plan is, there's two folds to the presentation. First, there's the plan itself, which includes three different learning options, which I'll explain. And then there's my recommendation for how we will begin school in August. And so I'm going to go through this. There are times when I will ask various members of our team to explain different components of the plan. Also, we have our administrative team on the call tonight to answer questions from their various areas and based on the work that they've been doing. We also have a number of other experts outside of the field of education joining us who have been integral to developing the plan and also working on our work groups. So we've already mentioned Mr. Joe Mazzola and Ms. Alex Jones from Franklin County Public Health. We also have Dr. Allison Norris, who is a medical doctor as well as an epidemiologist with Ohio State, Dr. Mary Lynn Nylund, who is a pediatrician as well, and Dr. Norris and Dr. Nylund are also parents in our district, and then also Cindy Tyson, who's one of our school nurses, is also joining us, and she served on the task force. So very fortunate to have these folks. We had other community members who served on the task force as well, but we've asked these folks to join us because when we get medical questions, I prefer to leave those to the experts. I'm an education person, so very, very grateful to have them with us tonight, and they'll be able to ask questions or answer questions as well. So what I'm going to do is go through the plan, and I'll go through the plan in full, and then I'm going to invite Mr. Mazzola to offer his remarks. He's the commissioner of Franklin County Public Health, and then we'll open it up for you to ask questions that you will need. I'll remind those who are watching that the board is not making a vote tonight. They are hearing the plan. While we've been publishing draft plans throughout and updating the board as well as the community, this is the first time the board is being presented with the full plan, and therefore they will take some time to reflect on it before casting a vote at our regular meeting on Tuesday, August 4. So this is our, yes, this is our back-to-school plan. So as I said, we have three different approaches, learning plans, so to speak, within this overall plan for the school year. And you have an all-in plan, which is how we normally do school. All the students come to school. In this plan, though, the slight difference would be we would be continuing with all risk mitigation procedures and protocols. In an all-in plan, we would have three feet of distance because that would be the maximum that we'd be able to do, but we would continue with all types of risk mitigation while students were in the building. That's the most aggressive plan and probably something that's well into the future based on what we've been told, but we still know that that's here. We won't take a lot of time on an all-in plan. We know how to do all-in school. And the risk mitigation procedures that would be in place would be in place in any of the plans or any times anyone's in our buildings. The second type of learning plan we have is a hybrid, and we've started calling it a hybrid. I'm not sure when that term picked up, but somewhere in the past few months. And basically, that is a way of doing school, providing education, where we would only have about half the students come to school at a time in order to maintain that six feet of distancing that has been advised to us to be safe. And this plan would come in person two days a week and then have distance learning three days a week. And I'm going to go into more details. And then a fully distance plan would be students learning from a distance five days a week. We'll talk about what this would, how this would look different this year. This is not the same distance learning plan that we had in the spring, so it would be a different type of plan. So those are the three components of a plan or the three ways that we might approach learning this year. And the guidance has been from many, not only from Franklin County Public Health, but our own team members and also just as educators, is that we should have all three of these ready to go because we may need to shift at times during the year based on what's happening in terms of the health and the spread of the virus in our communities. So that's why we have all three in our plan. So the next slide goes into a little more detail about the hybrid learning plan. When possible, we would move into a hybrid learning plan. We would make any kind of shift from plan to plan in collaboration with Franklin County Public Health, considering local data, including those county alert levels that people have become very familiar with, but also case rates, positivity rates, and trend data. And all of those are important. The first iteration of this plan, you may recall, was tied very directly to the alert levels, but as we've learned more from our health experts, we know that that should not be the driving, the only factor. And so we want to make sure it's clear that we're not just looking at the county alert levels, but also those case rates, positivity rates, and that trend data. That's extremely important. In a hybrid, again, about half the students would be coming just at one time, and we would work to make sure that family members were all attending on the same day or as well as members of the same household, if that would be important. And so basically, we would have a A and a group B. Group A would attend Monday and Tuesday. Group B would attend Thursday and Friday. And with the changeover of cohorts, we would then have Wednesday that would be all distance learning for all students, but it would also allow our custodial staff time to do more extensive cleaning and sanitization of our buildings. And so that's why the middle day would be the day that we would not have students coming to school in person. And the next slide talks about, begins to talk about what's the recommendation for starting school. And as we, as I communicated to our community and to our staff earlier this week, the recommendation to start the school year this year is in distance learning. And I will tell you, it pains me to make this recommendation. This fall will be the 32nd time I will have opened school as an educator, and it will be, if you approve this the first time, that I will not be welcoming students in person. And it is, not that it's difficult for me, it is, but it is not what we want for our students. That said, we must first and foremost follow the guidance of our public health professionals. I have neither the credentials, the experience, or the knowledge to go against those who do have expertise in these areas. And so in keeping with what our governor has asked, and in keeping with what the American Academy of Pediatrics has asked, we are working with our local health department to make our recommendations. And so that's where this recommendation is coming from. What I am recommending is that we take the first five days, August 17 through 21st, for professional development and training for our teaching staff and all of our staff. Previously, we had approved a calendar that would have had our teachers in August 17th, 18th, and 19th, with students beginning on the 20th. But because distance learning needs to look different in the fall than it did in the spring, we would appreciate those a couple of extra days in order to finalize plans, make sure that materials that need to be distributed to students can happen, and I think that we're going to need those two extra days. Then our recommendation would be to start school on August 24th for all students. Again, in a previous iteration, you would have seen that we talked about a two-week transition where we would have a portion, about 25% of our kids attend each of the days for the first two weeks to give teachers a chance to get to know their students and to do assessments. But more importantly, that was going to be time that we needed to teach students about all of the new procedures of attending school in a hybrid and attending school with all the social distancing and risk mitigation that needed to be in place. Because the recommendation is to start at a distance, we don't need to do a transition in to learn how to do school in the buildings in a new way. Should we be able to transition to a hybrid or all-in plan at some point, we would have to take some time to do that, and we would build that in. But for now, my recommendation is that students would begin receiving instruction on Monday, August 24th. So again, two days later than what we had originally planned. I will bring forth on Tuesday an updated calendar that would reflect this, so upon your vote, we would have our calendar updated as well. Again, our recommendation comes in partnership with Franklin County Public Health, but also with our Bexley Education Association, our teachers' union. And the recommendation at this point is for the first quarter. We can talk more about that later. And we will continue to meet regularly. Ms. Jones and Mr. Mazzola have graciously agreed to meet with central Ohio superintendents on a weekly basis, moving into, as we move into August and into the school year, so that we can continually be updated and get and ask questions. And so we will continue to do that as we move forward. So if we go to the next slide, one of the big questions, and I know board members and I and principals have received a number of emails over the last couple of days, and if you've sent us an email and we haven't answered yet, rest assured, we are reading them. But one of the primary questions that we've been asked is, how will this be different? What will be different about distance learning if we move forward with this? And so at this point, I'm going to invite our chief academic officer, Jill Abraham, to talk about this. She's been meeting with teacher groups regularly throughout the summer, so I'm going to turn this over to her.
Thank you. And as Dr. Miller said, it will be a different distance experience for our students. When we were thrust into it last spring, it was a very quick turnaround, which meant we had to mobilize technology to make sure that our families had at least a device in their homes, and we also had to give some pretty quick training and big asks of our teachers. And so what we've been able to do this summer, as we've worked across the different plans, is to figure out, what did we need to do so that when we started the school year, we could continue to provide our students with an exceptional learning experience regardless of which of the models we would move back into? So when we think about distance in the fall, how will it be different? Well, it will start with five full days of learning. And last spring, in comparison, we spent a portion of our day in office hours where teachers might have reached out to small groups of students or done a check-in. Oftentimes, assignments were posted to a learning platform, and students would go and gather the content in those ways. But as we plan for the return and think about those five full days, our principals are working very closely with their teachers to determine a structure that makes sense for kids and mirrors what they'll experience when they get to come back into school. So whether it's a hybrid or they're all-in, the structure will be familiar to them, and we're making sure that they get access to the content in a pattern that makes sense to them or a schedule. It will also give them opportunities so that they have daily connections with their teachers, which includes live teaching. It'll offer video lessons as well, and then there will be times for students to do what they would have done if they were in school, which is independent application, research, problem solving, and then even collaboration within small groups. So we're thoughtfully developing those plans. And the other piece that I would add to it is, we look to the fall, one of the things that was important was to ensure that our students in grades six through 12 would have the technology to engage in a regular schedule of instruction. So currently, our principals at those two buildings have worked with their families to see who needs, how many device needs are within their home so that all six through 12 students will have access daily to a device that will allow them to engage in their learning. The other piece that I would share is that it is, the curriculum that's being developed in this learning time is developed by our teachers, and we know that that is important. When we surveyed our families this summer and we were exploring e-learning, many of the questions that came to us were regarding, who is providing the instruction, who's developing the curriculum? Is it the Bexley curriculum? That matters to us. And so we are working very hard with our teachers to, again, build upon their instructional units that they've always provided to our students, but to be able to deliver them in this distance format.
Thank you.
Actually, there's a little more. We have a second slide on this. Thank you.
All right. There we go.
Okay, so defining a typical day, because I think that's sometimes very difficult for families. They're curious, what does this mean? What does time look like? And again, the structure is really important. We want to make sure that our kids develop a routine, so that's one of the things that we'll be working with our families, to ensure that it feels like a routine for their kids when they get up each day. And so our K-5 students, there will be learning that is provided as a structure for them to engage in throughout the day. We recognize our youngest students and the individual circumstances of our families will make it challenging at times for our students to be able to log in at a specific time. They may be in childcare, or parents may be working and they may not have access to a device. But we're planning a structure that will allow kids to access content that will follow the flow of the learning that would typically happen. Our six through 12 date will follow a similar day, and our kids will be working through a schedule. They'll follow their classes. It will, with the exception of maybe middle school, and Mr. Cottles on this, as a panelist, he can maybe contribute to the conversation as well, but looking at different types of scheduling. So they're looking at block scheduling for our middle school so that they're not necessarily experiencing all the subjects in one school, but maybe half in one day and half in another because what we learned about our middle school students last year is sometimes that full load in a distance format was a lot for them to manage at that level. But nonetheless, they'll have a full day of learning, and it will be coordinated. Our teacher's workday will mirror a typical teacher workday. So for our elementary staff as an example, they typically support students from 8:15 to 3:00. The three to four time is when they conduct collaborative meetings with their colleagues. They might be in district meetings, so they'll continue to work at both levels of full school day and be available to our parents as such. The last bullet then, as it talks about the organization of the day being dependent on the developmental grade level of students. I alluded to it with middle school and that just the organization of the day needs to represent, what does it look like for beginning middle schooler coming in? So if having all of their courses in one day is a lot to balance, they're working with a meaningful schedule that will allow them to break it into two days. For an elementary student, while their typical school day is from 8:15 to 3:00, what happens during that typical structure is, there's a small lesson, and then kids have time for independent practice, and then there are times for teachers to pull small groups, and then there are times for reconnecting, and there are times for recess and lunch. And so it's not that they're sitting in front of a teacher with a full day of just direct lessons, but there are times where there is a break in the lesson, and kids can go and independently practice and be kids. And so the structure of the day, as we plan for this distance environment, will be so that there are breaks where there might be a small lesson, and then kids are given an assignment where they might work in a journal, or they might work in their, within their math workbook. But again, the goal is to keep the structure so that it will feel familiar when they transition back in, whether it's through the hybrid or to the point when we finally are all-in, that they'll recognize this as a flow of their learning day.
I'm going to apologize because I was kicked off the call for a couple seconds. I hope I didn't miss something.
That's terrifying.
You needed me to go over. So Ms. Abraham has, we took the task force and we divided into work groups, and one of the work groups was the learning experience, and obviously, Ms. Abraham was leading up that work and continues to do that with our principals. And so they continue to plan for exactly what this, how this will work. One of the reasons we wanted to be able to come out, not too early, but as early as possible with a recommendation of how to start, is to allow our teachers to have one type of system that they're planning for. The complexities of planning for multiple ways of doing school are, it's hard for me to explain it. And so by really, at this point, focusing in those work groups that Ms. Abraham is leading on distance learning, the goal is to make that the most effective type of environment that we can make it for our students. I will reiterate, this is not ideal. This is not what we want, but we want to make it the very best that we can in the circumstances that we have. Another work group that we had worked on what athletics and other extracurricular or co-curricular programming could look like in both all-in, hybrid, and in distance learning. And so I'm, Dr. Williams, Dr. Harley Williams, headed up that work group, so I'm going to let him jump in here and talk about the work that they did.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank our committee for working on this in the states. We worked on both. A lot of doctors on our committee, four, five doctors that would help us with this process. It was a patient that we kind of landed on around extracurriculars would probably recommend. We talked about offline with the athletic director and Dr. Miller and other things offline about how we want to manage extracurriculars, because you know, we've got sports divided up into contact sports and non-contact sports. And so we were looking about, what could we allow some on-contact, but also tennis might have doubles playing together, and we couldn't maintain a six-foot of distancing. So we were looking at all the possible options, and we were, obviously, according to our emergency operations plan, looking for guidance. And I know it's a local decision, but county public, as far as suspending all sports for the time being, we decided that was the best approach to ensure the safety and not only of our student athletes, but also of our coaches. And so we're making that recommendation today. And our clubs and activities, we have something in a handbook that we've created that basically follows the same, while we're in an all-in setting, we could certainly have virtual or face-to-face meetings for our clubs. And while we're in a hybrid, it would only be virtual or possibly outdoors meetings. And then outs, if we're all out, then the only meetings we can possibly have would be virtual only. That's all I have.
So we had another work group around social and emotional support. One of the things, yes.
Can I interrupt you really quick? I'm sorry. Do you think it makes more sense for us to make, to ask questions as you go through each one of these things? I should have asked you at the end of Jill's, or do you want to get through the whole thing and then?
I'd like to go through the whole thing and let Mr. Mazzola address general comments that he may want to make as well, and then let you ask questions because it's possible that we'll answer some of them.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, thank you. So again, another work group was around social, emotional support, and our director of student and community engagement, Ms. Lason Smith, is headed up, heading up that work group. And again, all of these work groups continue to work, continue to refine. One of our greatest concerns as a school district is the social, emotional well-being of our students and our staff. And in fact, if you go back to last year, we were planning for Bexley Be Well and really focusing in on mental health, and certainly, a pandemic has a whole other part, an impact on that, as well as the social unrest and the social injustice that we are all watching and have been watching take place in our country over many, many, many years. And we are, as we've all talked before, committed to becoming an anti-racist school district, and that really also connects in the social and emotional wellness area. And so I'm going to turn it over right now to Ms. Smith to talk about the work that her groups are doing.
Good evening. So our, the social and emotional group is made up of both teachers and school counselors who have really been trying to figure out how we support our students as it relates to social, emotional learning and to equity, as Dr. Miller referred to. The couple of key points that we started off with, what was important for us in this group, had to do with making sure we were able to cultivate a sense of belonging for not just our students, but also our community at large, to include our staff and to include our families, making sure that we could provide structures for physical and emotional safety for each of our students, staff, and families, building and sustaining relationships that support and nurture our students, and then ensuring equitable opportunities, access, and support for each student. And so, as I'm sure you know, we have a group of wonderful school counselors, and they shared lots of great resources. The one that we landed on that really helped to inform our work is in the second bullet point, the reunite, renew, and thrive social and emotional learning, SEL roadmap for reopening schools. And so they came out, and this is put on by Castle, which is a good resource that we've always used as we're doing our work with school counselors. They came out with four critical practices, and we've taken those critical practices and used those as our guiding points to be able to start to think about plans for social and emotional learning support and equity support. So the first critical practice is around taking time to cultivate and deepen relationships, build partnerships, and actually plan for SEL. And so I'll just highlight a couple of points for each. And so I'll just highlight a couple of points for each critical practice. One of the ones, and this one is around messaging. And so we're working on how we ensure that students, staff and families know that we are prioritizing social emotional learning and that they know why it is important for us to do it. And I think for a lot of our parents, it is very high on the top of their priority list. And it is good for them to know that the district is also making this a priority. One of the other key points in this critical practice is in terms of supporting our teachers to make sure that they are able to make those connections, especially now with the chance of us doing distance learning for the first quarter, that we will provide templates and ideas and resources so that teachers don't have to think up all of those things, but we can help support that communication and that relationship building with our students. The second critical practice is around what we're doing to support staff, which we know is also important. So it's about creating safe, supportive and equitable. Oh, I'm sorry. I just skipped a page on my notes. It's about designing opportunities where adults can connect, heal and build their capacity so that they're able to support our staff. We know that all of us are going through this pandemic together and going through the crisis that we're seeing play out around race and racism. And we need to make sure that we're supporting our staff so that they're able to best support our students. And so a couple of key points from this area are around dedicating space-time and agreements for staff to come together so that they can continue to build those relationships, engage in supportive dialogue and to start to do some healing, especially with the way that we had to have an abrupt school ending for spring. Another key point in this area is embedded, scheduled, consistent professional development. This is something that is, again, top priority for our staff and for us as we come into this new school year. And a couple of focus areas for the professional development will be around social and emotional learning, not just those topics that need to be covered, specifically maybe by our school counselors and our Nationwide Children's Hospital clinicians, but also helping teachers be prepared to embed social emotional learning into the learning that they're doing with their students. The second key area of professional development under this area will be around anti-racism and equity to make sure that each of our students feels like they're a part of our community. We'll also look at how, as the leadership team and principals, we can support the self-care of our staff members. The third critical practice is creating safe, supportive and equitable learning environments that promote all students' social and emotional development. And here is where we're really focused on explicit SEL instruction integrated into academic instruction. So it's not just that someone comes in and delivers that instruction, but that is continuously happening in the instruction that is provided by our teachers. And another key area in this critical practice is the importance of the systems that we have in place, that we need to review, reteach and revisit consistently. And some of those systems include our multi-tiered systems of support, our response to intervention and our PBIS, which all of our students get lessons in at the beginning of each quarter and through our school year. And then our last critical practice is using data as an opportunity to share power, deepen relationships and continuously improve support for students, families and staff. And so that has been something that we've really been focused on the past couple of years. We have a lot of data in our district, but figuring out how to best use the data, how to read the data and how to connect the data so that we can take that information and support each of our students. And some of the specific data that relates to social emotional learning is the Panorama questionnaire, which we started using last year. So looking at that data and how we can support teachers in supporting their students around what the students are telling us that they need. And then looking at more informal ways to collect information. So whether that be a questionnaire, whether that be teachers or other staff members checking in with students, and then just making sure that we're able to capture that information, connect that information and come up with a plan to continue to support each of our students. And that is it for my part.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Another work group was led by Ms. Samantha McMasters, our Director of Student Services. This is around the support for special populations. Obviously, we are planning to support each student through the learning experience, but we do know that we have special populations that we need to make additional and special plans for. And so Ms. McMasters is going to talk about the work that her group has been doing.
Okay, thank you. I will start with, we started with a very large group. I think we had about seventeen staff members who participated. We have now broken that into four subgroups because we're working in each of the areas. The first one is our literacy specialists. So all of our literacy specialists from the elementary buildings participated. And they put together a plan that involves not only how we will assess students as we come into the school year, but then how we will use that data and that information to target students who need intensive intervention in the area of literacy. They've developed a schedule that will go across the five days of learning for both synchronous opportunities for small groups of students, as well as some support for general education teachers and some additional recorded lessons that students that can then go back to practice and work through. So that work continues. The second group is our English language learners. I continue to work closely with Nate Meyer and Allison Nakasako, who are developing individualized learning plans for each of our EL students that will be distributed to the classroom teachers so that they have some guidance on how to inform their instruction for the students, but then also how Allison and Nate will be doing some direct intervention in terms, in terms of English learning for, for those students. The next one is our gifted population. We worked with the gifted intervention specialists who are, continue to work with Colleen, Colleen Boyle, and work on their plans for what that schedule will look like for our gifted students. The, probably the biggest work group that continues to go on is our special education. And we get, continue to get a lot of questions about what this will look like for students with IEPs. Our focus is highly on the coordination with our general education staff, as well as communication with families. So our intervention specialists are working closely on the individual needs for students, identifying how those needs will be met in a remote environment. I'm also working with our related service personnel, which involves our speech pathologists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, and what instruction and intervention they can provide remotely and then what we may need to do in person for some individual students. So we continue to work through that process. Our school psychologists have prioritized evaluations and they continue to work through those processes with families. But again, across all four of the special population areas, our focus is going to continue to be on that coordination of effort with general education, as well as that communication with families. So we have clear learning plans for each of our students.
Thank you, Ms. McMasters. A couple more groups that we'll talk about, but at this point, I wanted to talk about our Bexley E-Learning Academy. Ms. Abraham mentioned that earlier in the summer, we did a survey of our parents, a non-binding survey, asking how many parents would be interested in an e-learning or a distance option, regardless of how we would return to school. And at that time, there was about ten to eleven percent of our parents were interested in that option. And one of our strengths is that we are a small community. One of our challenges is that we are small. And so that, that number really didn't have the ability to pull teachers away from in-person learning to also do distance learning. And so we were looking at how to provide that distance learning. And we were talking with other school districts and looking what they were doing. And many at a third-party option, Florida Virtual Academy, APEC, Edgenuity, there's a, Edmentum, there's a few different groups that provide this. And so we started looking into that. And then as the, the conditions in Franklin County and Columbus changed, there were, was a request for people to say, survey again, because we're changing our minds. And so our second survey, which was in July, between twenty-five and twenty-seven percent of our families were saying we would want distance learning no matter what. But what also became clear, as Ms. Abraham mentioned, is that people wanted a Bexley teacher. And we understand that and we would agree that, that that is the very best way to, to have education delivered and Bexley is from a Bexley teacher. But again, our, the challenge was how would we be able to provide in-person learning as well as fully distant? And a fully distant learning environment really can't be replicated by just turning Zoom on and watching a class take place. It is a different type of instruction as, as Ms. Abraham has been talking about and as the teachers are working on. And so to start the year, we are not offering an e-learning academy. All of our students will receive their instruction from a distance in the curriculum with a Bexley teacher. If we're able to return to school in person at some point, then we will need to look at an e-learning academy because we know that there are families who would not be able to send their children back to school for health reasons, either in the family or for their children. And so what we will do is take this, the next time, we, few weeks that we have to continue and investigate, how do we best offer instruction to students who may not return to school while our teachers are also providing instruction for students who do return to school? It could be a third-party vendor with more support from, from a Bexley teacher. It, it, or it could be completely a Bexley teacher. We don't know what the, as we've learned in the last few weeks, things are, actually in the last few months, things change very, very quickly. And so we're going to continue to investigate this. But to start the year, we are not asking parents to commit to this. If, if parents would need this at some point, we're going to work with them individually. We are going to be investigating what other options we have moving forward. The greatest, greatest challenge is at the secondary level because we offer so many courses, and again, that's a strength, but we don't have a large teaching staff. So if we had even, you know, five students and they're each in a different science course, to try to have a teacher to say, okay, you have to teach some kids physics and some students biology and some students not chemistry, that may not be the same teacher necessarily. And so we have some more work to do around this. We know we may need it, but at this point, we, we know that we need to do some more work. We've heard from our families, we've heard from our parents, and we're going to continue to work on this option. The next area that we wanted to talk about was childcare. We know that making the recommendation to start in a distance environment creates a challenge for our families, especially our families of younger children. We are sensitive to that. And so we have been willing to be part of the solution. So over this summer, Bexley Recreation and Parks Department, Mr. Mike Price, reached out to us and said, we don't have enough space at Jeffrey Mansion to do, to do the distancing that we need to do with students in order to offer childcare in the summer. Can we work with? So as you, as you know, they are utilizing space at Maryland Elementary following the guidelines of the Ohio Job and Family Services to allow for a childcare environment. So it's pods of students, only nine in a pod. And so because we're looking at starting at a distance, we've already had a meeting this week with Katie Savaras and Mike Price, our elementary principals, and Ms. Smith joined us as well. And so working, this, this childcare option will be delivered through Bexley Rec and Parks, but we are going to be supportive of that and even in terms of how do we support families for whom there may be a financial challenge of the childcare. But we're, we're committed. I had a great conversation with our mayor, Ben Kessler, also yesterday. And we're committed to making sure that we find students who need this and then supporting them through that. I also just today had a meeting with Mr. Ronnie Khan, who oversees preschool and the summer programming at the Jewish Community Center. And they are also going to be offering a childcare option during the school day for families. They are sending, he has already sent me some information, which we will share with our community in our newsletter that will go out tomorrow. So that if that is an option for them, they are looking to be able to support approximately thirty-six to forty-five K to five students. In both cases, they're looking at this not only being childcare, but knowing that students will be attending school during the day. There would be an educational support for those students. Those students would still be taught by their Bexley teachers and be part of our class. But the, the teachers providing the daycare service would be able to connect with our teachers and support the students as well. And so those are two options that are currently being developed to support our families. And we will partner with both of them and do all that we can to support our families who are going to need childcare because we are sensitive to, to that need. The last work group that worked was also led by Dr. Williams, and that's health and safety. And what we know, what all of us have learned about is, you know, we all have vocabulary that we never used before, such as social distancing, personal protective equipment, sanitization, lots of things that we now know about. And so Dr. Williams, as he mentioned, worked with a number of doctors and nurses to really develop our risk mitigation. And also he spent a lot of time reading CDC guidelines and, and various guidance documents. So I'm going to turn this part over again to Dr. Williams. And in our full plan, it's also posted on our, on the board docs, but is on our website and has been updated. The, the, there are many, many more details than what are on the slide, but I'll let him talk through this.
Thank you again. Yeah, I'd like to, again, thank, thank our committee for the work that, and the time we put in. We just actually finished our document yesterday after spending. So now we, our, my goal now is to transform a lot of the language into a document that we can share with parents and the community members as well. I think a lot of it will be transferable. But basically, our, our goal was to mitigate risk, not eliminate it. We're not, we're not claiming we could actually ever eliminate it, but we, we use an approach that as many barriers and filters that we could put and protect people with these different layers, that the better, the chances are that we can keep people safe. And we also know that distance and time and face masks and cough and sneeze etiquette and hand sanitizations are paramount. And so we have made sure we have addressed each of those. We're going to require everyone, unless they have a medical exemption, to wear a mask while they're in school. We're putting in every classroom and multiple places in the hallways, hand sanitizing stations. We expect students to hand sanitize in, hand sanitize out of every classroom. We're looking at additional barriers when they, when they're needed for different accommodations, protect our staff. Having a lot of conversations with, with our employees too, to make sure that we're aware of their needs and we can provide appropriate accommodations when, when needed. We have put a lot of if and then scenarios when it comes to exposure and contact so we understand what guidance we give to employees and families that might have some preliminary questions that we think we could answer for them. We've addressed issues on how we're going to manage cafeteria and a hybrid. In a hybrid setting, we're, we're doing everything we can to keep six feet of distance between people in our building as, as, as much as possible. That includes looking at one-way directional traffic flow patterns in the hallways, six feet in the cafeteria, encouraging students and staff to go outside as often as possible for instruction or for lunch, when it's, when it's appropriate and weather permitting. It, I can go on and maybe I should kind of end here because this document, I think. And it also includes a Bexley Health Pledge that we're going to ask families and employees to screen and, and report, report. We haven't got all the details, but we have the details of the pledge. We're still working through how we want this to work in practicality as far as informing that, that they're not suffering any of these symptoms when they come into school. Like I said, we're providing face masks and face shields for additional layers protection for those that need them. PTOs have helped buy student shields too, if that would, that we could possibly use as additional layer. But this document, I think, came out to a little over thirty pages. And I'm trying to summarize all of it real quickly here for you. But soon I'll be sharing that, hopefully next week, with the staff with an operations update. And then, as I said, we'll transfer a lot of the things in that document and put something together for our families and communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Again, you can imagine that's, that the kind of what we would call administrative guidelines become very, very detailed. But Tyler Trill pulled up for you the plan, which is also again on our website, as well as on board docs tonight. But Tyler Trill pulled up for you the plan, which is also again on our website as well as on board docs tonight. It has a lot more detail than the slide, which talks about masks, classrooms, volunteers, visitors, recess, et cetera. So again, thank you to the community members and parents who are healthcare, who have been able to help develop that. At this time, I'm going to give Mr. Mazzola an opportunity to address the board as well. So, Mr. Mazzola.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. It's good to be with all of you tonight and good evening to all the residents who may be watching as well online. Really privileged to be with you this evening. Thanks so much for the opportunity. I'll keep my remarks brief. First and foremost, I want to say how thankful we are to have the collaboration with the Bexley City Schools. It has been a tremendous partnership. You know, we are fortunate only to have that relationship in Bexley. But of course, working with the city of Bexley, the Bexley Board of Health, and I know the Bexley COVID-19 Task Force has been very active over the last several months. So we very much appreciate the continued collaboration at the school and community level. So just quickly, I just want to kind of just talk through very briefly what's really has changed over the last six to eight weeks. And I know it's in the, in the guidance that we've shared with the superintendent's office, and I'm sure you have all had a chance to see that. But really, over the last six to eight weeks, we have seen a significant increase in cases across Franklin County, and that includes the public health jurisdiction. And with that rising cases, when you couple that with the fact that we have been, we, our weekly positivity rates have ranged anywhere between eight to 13% on any given week. And that trend has, has actually gone up over the last three to four weeks. It's given us a lot of concern as we look at back to school. And so our recommendations right now, as you all know, are to look at a remote learning environment to begin the school year. We don't take those recommendations lightly. We understand the significance that they will have if adopted by the board, the significance on our families and on our students, not just from an educational standpoint, but from a social emotional standpoint, all of the things that, that your plan has included. So, you know, we certainly, it's incumbent upon the Health Department to provide, in our opinion, the best public health guidance that we can provide to the Board of Education in the most timely, as fashion that we can provide it. We didn't want to wait and continue into August and see those numbers continue to climb and then make a recommendation and not give our school districts an opportunity to pivot and be prepared to go online to start the school year. And so we thought it was appropriate this time to provide that recommendation. We have committed to working with our school superintendents on a weekly basis, as was mentioned earlier, to go through and work through the data on a weekly basis. And hopefully, as we start to see, and hopeful, we're hopeful that we'll see some, some indicators that will move in a direction that will give us an opportunity to, to reevaluate these recommendations and hopefully, you know, make a different recommendation over the next month to six weeks. But we certainly, just I want to leave with one more thought. You know, what we can no better appreciate over the last two months as this pandemic has, has affected all of us, is that what's going on in the community level, the risk level in the community really dictates our opportunity to be successful in bringing kids back into the classroom. And that to me, right now, that risk level is, is just simply too high for us to advise and recommend that our, our kids come back into the classroom, even in a hybrid setting. And so it's a difficult conversation. It's one that, you know, we certainly, certainly didn't want to find ourselves in. We were in a different place six to eight weeks ago as far as our case counts. But as we were watching those numbers trend in that direction, including our positivity rates, we just felt this was the best recommendation at this time. I'd like to maybe ask Alex Jones, our Assistant Health Commissioner, who's been involved with the return to school effort and, and lots of other ways, has led a lot of our response efforts related to COVID-19, maybe for any additional comments, but I really appreciate the time this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Yes, thank you, Joe, and good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us here. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. So the only perhaps additional data item that I might add to Joe's report is that something that's of concern to us specifically is over the last month, month and a half, we have steadily seen our median age related to our case, our confirmed cases decline. At the beginning of this outbreak, we were seeing individuals that median age are in the high 50s. I believe 56 was our median. And now, and checking today, it has declined to 41. So we are certainly seeing a lot more cases than at the beginning of this outbreak in our younger population, zero to 19, but specifically our 21 to 30-year-olds as well. So certainly an area of concern for us that we continue to watch and monitor. And I certainly want to echo Joe's comments that, you know, we know that this is a community effort and that it will really take all of us to, to slow the spread and to get us back to as much of a new normal as we can be. So I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Joe, and Alex, really appreciate you joining us. I know you've been busy attending lots of Board of Education meetings across Franklin County. So thank you so much for giving us your time. At this point, we've presented our plan, albeit at a high level. Again, there's more detail, the full plan that's available on board docs or on our website. And I want to give the board an opportunity to ask questions that would help you to inform your vote on, on Tuesday, knowing, and again, I'm not saying this so much for the board, but for those who are listening, that the desire to decide on how to start school at this point is to allow our teachers and our administrators time to develop the details that are going to need to be developed. It seems to be very complex. And so we want to make sure they have all the time, but that may mean you have a question that we don't have an answer to just yet. So I will, at this point, let, let the board ask, and I'll ask of our guests that are on, our administrators and our guests, if you're the best person to answer, feel free to go ahead and jump in on an answer, so.
Great, thank you, Kim, very much for presenting all of this. For my fellow board members, I think it would be easiest, at least to start off with, if we can, we'll start with a single person and have you ask some questions. And that may obviously bring up some questions from the rest of us. But maybe Victoria, since you have been our fearless leader on our task force, which we greatly appreciate, maybe you could start with some of your questions.
I'm happy to start, but I, I do want to give other board members an opportunity because I have been so involved in these, in the task force, which has been a real, an honor and a privilege to participate. I've heard some of the things, and so I want to make sure that I'm not monopolizing. I do want to start by saying thank you to Mr. Mazzola, Ms. Jones, and all the other people that are here tonight to help us. It's really greatly appreciated and it makes a big difference to me as an individual board member. I can't speak for the other board members, but I'm sure that they would, would want to say the same thing to get this kind of direct input, it's so valuable. I also want to mention what a privilege it has been to work with the subcommittees of the task group. I worked with Jill Abraham's group on learning experience and had the opportunity to really just observe a number of teachers, administrators, principals, and others talk about what the planning is going to be. And a lot of what we get from the community is, how, how come you're just getting to planning? The planning has been ongoing. It's been ongoing for a long time. And I really am just overwhelmed by the work that the teachers and the, and the task force folks in the learning and in the groups that Harley has led, because I've also been with those groups. I'm starting with the teacher groups because I'm so impressed with how prepared our teachers already are to lead in, in hybrid learning as well as distance learning. The, the health and safety group and the extracurriculars group that Harley led, likewise, we had some of the folks who are on our panels tonight, other epidemiologists, nurse, teacher, doctor, input every day, going through the document that Harley described, it's about a 35-page document, figuring out how to make the schools safe and what we can do, even when we're in distance learning, to permit the kind of social emotional support, the kind of special, special educations, special population support that we're going to need in, in hybrid as well as distance learning. I want to reassure the community that we are well on our way to being completely prepared for meeting the needs of our students as we look to the beginning of the school year. I, I'm going to start with questions for Mr. Mazzola and Ms. Jones and just ask you to describe the process that you go through when you make a recommendation, such as the recommendation that came out, you know, today's Thursday. I think it, days are tough. I, I think just this week, maybe, you know, earlier this week to recommend, and I think the language in your recommendation is strongly recommend that schools go back to sessions in a distance learning model for the beginning of the year.
Thank you for the question. So this, this recommendation comes about four weeks after our initial recommendations back in early July, in a different place relative to our case counts and so forth. So again, as I mentioned, when we start, when we started to see that uptick in cases right around that time, we've been watching it, of course, very closely. And we started having some internal conversations about that. And again, as, as I mentioned, I've been very fortunate. We've been having some ongoing dialogue with our superintendents for most of the summer on a very regular basis. But it's certainly, over the last two weeks or so, became very clear that things had changed significantly. And that's when we started to really look into what sort of recommendations we may have to explore as a Health Department. And so we did a lot of internal conversations with our medical director, with our staff. And then over the last week or so, really starting to refine a potential option here in terms of that recommendation. We, we had some external conversations with our other colleagues at Columbus Public Health, our colleagues, external colleagues, and some national experts as well. And so I reached out personally to several individuals that, that, that I felt were, I wanted to vet some of these ideas and, and this recommendation on. And so it was a very thoughtful process, took, you know, several weeks in the making, a lot of internal conversation. But again, we also wanted to, you know, certainly look at what was the latest literature and, and best practices here. And again, this idea that I think is really, really important to stress is that the relationship between the risk and the community is so important to, to really inform how we and when we can open up schools safely. And that to me is really the biggest piece here that, that we felt was kind of the, sort of the final consideration in terms of this recommendation.
Can I follow up with you on that one, please, Mr. Mazzola? This is Marlee Snowden, I don't know if you can, it probably doesn't matter who's asking the question. But my question to you is, when you talk about the risk level dictating it in our community, and you also mentioned eight, 13% positivity rates. I've been looking through the documentation and the data, you know, since March. And I, can you tell me where people can find the positivity rates for Franklin County?
Yep, so the positivity rates, we are gathering that information directly from hospitals and community health centers that are doing testing around our community.
And are you reporting that to the public on your?
We, we have not yet reported that to the public. That's a process that just started about a month ago. And we're, we're collaborating with Columbus Public Health on that. So we've not yet been able to post that information, something we certainly can do, but we have not been able to post that yet. And we're actually still building that as well. So we're, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to include not only the community health centers and hospitals, their data, but also our pharmacies who have now expanded their testing at the community level to really help inform and complete that picture for us.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, is a step back, and that is that I've been hearing from lots of community members over the last couple of days. And I wondered if you could address for us, just because most of us, you know, haven't really had much of a reason to think about the Franklin County Public Health Department before March. And I've heard several people say, well, Mr. Mazzola isn't even a doctor, why is he giving us advice? I'm sure you've heard that before. I was wondering if you could clarify that for some of our community members.
I am, I am not a physician. The Health Department by statute is required to have a medical director. So Dr. Miller Sullivan is our medical director, has been for 20 years. He's a practicing pediatrician.
Great, thank you. And then it's your job to, to put forward, or tell me a little bit more of what your position is in relation to your medical director.
Sure, I'll, I'll back up for a little bit. So Franklin County Public Health is a general health district. We provide public health services to our townships, villages. And then we, and then we have contracts with 14 cities across Franklin County, including the city of Bexley. And so we provide public health services for the city of Bexley. As the Health Commissioner, I report to the Board of Health, as does the Medical Director, and I oversee the daily operations of the department.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else have any other questions on this kind of, this part for, for Mr. Mazzola?
I do. Victoria, are you finished?
I don't mind deferring and just, I've, I've got other questions, but I'm happy to have other people go ahead of me and I'll pull in at the end if there are more.
Okay, just really quick, Mr. Mazzola, I am curious, when you're collecting data for Franklin County, obviously, we have a number of counties that neighbor our, our community. So how much of that information is impacting the data that you're collecting and therefore informing infection rates, that sort of thing? I mean, how much of it is physically parsed down and are you collecting it in that way? Or are you just saying, hey, if you report into a hospital in the boundaries of Franklin County, we have a positive case rate?
No, the data that I'm sharing with you is Franklin County data, residents of Franklin.
Residents, okay.
And hi, this is Alex Jones, if I may add. So when cases are reported, positive cases follow that residence or that individual's residence. So I know a common question we get is, so say Dublin Methodist, if an individual presents to Dublin Methodist, is that number counted in their cases? And the, and the answer is no. That residence of that, that individual is where that case is attributed to. So when you look at the attributed cases to the 43209 ZIP code, you can, we can see that, yes, those are individuals who live there and did not just receive care perhaps in, in that area at urgent care, et cetera.
Dr. Norris, did you have a comment you wanted to add?
I did, thank you so much. As Dr. Miller mentioned, I'm an epidemiologist and a faculty member at Ohio State. And I just wanted to make a comment reflecting on Joe Mazzola's idea that it's, you know, we were in a really different place in June than we are today at the end of July. And what's driving the revised recommendation from Franklin County Public Health is that we have much higher rates of COVID in our local community of Franklin County now than we did seven weeks ago. And as a result, it, it looks like it's not safe to open for in-person in the schools, even in a hybrid setting. And so what I really want to implore our community, our families, all the families that are listening to this call, is that that idea of community risk and community prevalence is based on our behaviors. All of us, all of us who live here and our children, all of us are responsible for bringing back community prevalence and community spread down to a level such that it's safe to open schools. And so all these plans we have for the schools, keeping six feet distance between people who don't live together, frequent hand hygiene, staying in cohorts, being outdoors for activities whenever possible, those are the behaviors we all have to do now so that when we're trying to make the next decision at the beginning of the second quarter, we have a different community context of how much COVID we have in the community. And I know a lot of people are scared to go back to school. So those very folks, all of us, those who are scared and those who are not, need now to put into practice the activities that will change the local context of COVID such that we'll have a different picture and our schools will be in a different setting and a different opportunity seven weeks from now.
Let me just as a follow up to that, I want to confirm the case, you know, we're talking about. Among other things, not just positivity, but new cases, and it's my understanding that the. Number of new cases in mid-July has approximately tripled in Franklin County from where it was a month or so ago. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the number of of the percentage of cases in the age group that's zero to nineteen, I think, Ms. Jones, you talked about. The average cases, the average age of cases coming down from in the 50s to 41. Do we have right now the number of the percentage of cases for? People, students, you know, our students, the the young, young age. Demographics zero to nineteen or so?
Yeah, and actually, thank you for that question, I was looking at our daily Epi Report, and so that is on our website, and we do update that every day, and. I believe it's on page three of four, it will show the the curve of the ages. Broken down by sex and age range, so for that zero to nineteen, I was looking today and we are at fourteen percent. Of our cases are in that zero to nineteen age range.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Mazzola?
Am I allowed to, can I follow up on that, Marley, just because I want to make? Yes, for Mr. Mazzola, you said that.
So this is Dr. Nylund speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a pediatrician, sorry, thank you. You said that the cases in Franklin County have tripled. Since the beginning, the middle of June, is that correct?
Yeah, so and I don't have the the Epi Report in front of me, but somewhere in early June, all the way through mid to late July. Approximately tripled over that timeframe, now in the last week to 10 days, we've started to see a little bit of a decline, which has been very encouraging. Where, you know, obviously, we're not making any conclusions on that yet, but certainly we are starting to see some decline in cases. And hopefully, obviously, to see that continue.
And so so the last week would count as one of the, as the first of four weeks of consecutive decrease in cases toward getting back to in-person education.
I would say that it would, yes.
Okay, and then I just want to tack on to Allison as well about how everybody needs to be living like you have the virus or that the person next to you has the virus, I think that there's been a. Giant disconnect and people, I think when we were in lockdown. Everybody knew that they were supposed to stay home and they were supposed to, when they went out, wear their mask and keep six feet. And then when the economy began to open again, there was a big disconnect where people don't understand what it means to be exposed or sick. And waiting on a test, and so people, I see it every day in my pediatric practice, people are not staying home when they are sick. Or exposed and supposed to be quarantining or actually diagnosed with the disease, and the only way. That this will get beaten and we will get the kids back into in-person school is for people to follow those guidelines. You have to stay home when you are sick, you have to stay home when you have been exposed. You have to talk to your doctor when you have respiratory symptoms that could be COVID, otherwise, we will never beat this.
Thank you.
May I add to that, that Dr. Nylund, thank you so much for that. As we are nearing the end of summer and vacations, we know that people are continuing to travel. And hopefully, they're being safe and keeping distance while they're doing that, but. I would ask, and we can't enforce this, but our governor has made a recommendation, if you return from a certain number of states. That you quarantine for 14 days, and as the board and my leadership team knows. I was in South Carolina when the docs, when the governor made that recommendation, and so therefore, I am quarantining in my house for 14 days. And my team knows how much I hate not being in my office and being at work, but. I I I share that only because I I think it is important. We want our kids back in school, I desperately want our children back in school, it is the very best place for them to be. But I just want to lend as the as the leader of the school district, my plea to our community that if you come back from one of the states. That has been identified, that you do take that time to quarantine. So that, so hopefully, we can get our kids back soon, and then and I just agree, it's going to take all of us doing our part. So that we can have children back in school because we know this is good for them, we know that the best place is in school. So I just going to again lend my plea to people. As you're maybe returning from vacations to to do the 14-day quarantine if you, and a lot of Ohioans go to South Carolina, so please, please follow that.
Mr. Mazzola, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alicia.
Or Ms. Jones, so you said we've had a down, a slot, a slight. Downtick in cases over the last four weeks, and I guess my understanding is that's the whole point, right? That we want to have a downtick in cases. And so I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around if if the the cases are going down, why then? I I mean, is this gonna, every four weeks, we're gonna say, well, the cases are going down, but we still aren't going to go back to school, like, you know? If they if they had continued to rise, then yes, I could see. Why we would make that decision, but if they're going down, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around. The the justification there, if you could just clarify for me.
Yeah, happy to try to do that, and Alex, please as well. So, yes, we have started to see a decline in cases over the last week to 10 days. But if you if you contextualize that, we are still, again, almost two, almost three times higher than we were six to eight weeks ago, so the. So that is still of concern, the the actual number of cases is still of concern, even though we're starting to see that decline. Again, the positivity rates are still very, much too high at this point. And then there's, you know, there's just other indicators that we're looking at relative to the state's advisory system as well. So, and to your point about the whole four weeks, you know, we we definitely don't want to, and this is why we changed, another reason why we changed our guidance. We don't want to simply tie our guidance to the state's advisory system, because as we have seen over the last, since it's implemented, it's updated weekly. So Franklin County could go from red, and hopefully, we do go to orange, and then go back to red and so forth, and so that's something we want to stay away from. We want to include that that information in in our considerations and in our in our conversations. But we don't want to find ourselves in a place where we're kind of going back and forth, whether that's every four weeks. Or every two weeks or whatever that might be, we're hoping to obviously look at a more sustained decline and then and get to a place where we feel confident. That we can, you know, actually implement a new guidance and keep that guidance in place. So it's just giving ourselves the best opportunity to do that, and that's why we wanted to make sure we have ongoing dialogue with the school board and with the school district, that's. That to us is is vital to this process is that it has to be an ongoing conversation, that we don't want to come back to you a month and and tell you kind of where our views are. We want this to be an active, ongoing dialogue between the the Health Department and the and the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you for that, that definitely makes more sense.
I have a. Another question, and and I also wanted to just start with. I want to make sure that I'm thinking about this, right, when we talk about. Almost three times as many cases, it's really almost three times as many new cases, right, and when we're talking about cases, we're really mostly talking about new cases. And the distinction is that we've got a much higher number of total cases. And the the incidence of new cases is what's put us there, but our new cases are coming down, is that, is that fair?
So we're talking about daily new cases, I'll let Alex kind of speak to that.
No, that's that's what I was going to say as well, Joe, apologies for that, but yes, that is what we are seeing, I know toward that last week of June. We were averaging about 25 cases per day, at the height of that, we were nearing 80 cases per day, this last week, we saw, we were actually able to. We had some great news and were able to decrease that to 69, so as Joe was saying, we are starting to see it kind of taper and level down, so we'll continue to watch that trend of our new cases. Reported to us per day.
And the new cases per day has gone down for 10 days or so, is that right?
Yes, that that's correct, oh, I I unfortunately will say that today, you know, and that's why we don't really look day to day, because it could spike and skew us, but. I know as a state, we have reached our highest daily reporting rate, so I'm sure that will affect our data since we are, you know, in Franklin County, in addition with Columbus Public Health. We are seeing the most cases in our state.
I appreciate all that, and I have another question. In our last board meeting, I personally talked a lot about the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance. And I, you know, pulled stuff out of there and I mentioned a lot about it. That guidance encourages us to get students back into the schools. For, you know, social emotional reasons and mental health and, you know, lots of other things that, you know, are affected by COVID, but aren't exactly, you know. COVID illness related. When you, when the boards of health make their decisions about. What to make, what to recommend under these circumstances, do you balance through the issues of the sort of what what we would see? In the guidance that's been provided by the AAP with other information that you have, how do you how do you address those issues?
Yeah, we 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 did, and thank you for bringing that up, that was one of the pieces of information that we that we looked at very closely. And I personally spoke to the Executive Director of the Ohio Chapter of the Academy of Pediatric, of American Academy of Pediatrics. We fundamentally would would are in alignment with the recommendations, we want and and we we absolutely, I think we all share that goal of getting kids back into the classroom. You know, so I I want that to be very clear that Franklin County Public Health, our goal is to get kids back in the classroom like yours is as well. And most of what the what the recommendations that they put forward. Most of that we would certainly agree with, I think we do have a little bit of a discussion about the three-foot rather than the six-foot. Social distancing requirement, but fundamentally, we understand and appreciate why it's so important, obviously, to get kids back into the classroom. And I really want to thank the American Academy of Pediatrics for that document, because it's really helped shape the debate. And inform our conversations, and they are an excellent partner here in the state of Ohio, and we we do have that ongoing dialogue with them.
That's great, thank you. I have another question, but I'm happy to let other board members take turns, I don't want to monopolize it.
Can I add to that question, Victoria, also, am I allowed to type in like this, that's okay as as the panelists?
Yeah, we're we'll limit most of our questions for the board members, but definitely, if you want to ask something briefly, you may.
I mean, I would, I'd just like to point out that the the pediatric numbers. Compared to the, yes, this is a virus that does, that affects everybody and affects the elderly greatest. And the pediatric numbers are exceedingly low, and I think that that needs to be brought up as well, that. You know, since the onset of the pandemic, there have been thirteen, thirteen hundred and thirteen positive cases in children, and. I want to say seventy-eight new cases last week, there have been thirty-seven children admitted to the hospital. For COVID-related symptoms, and so we are. Making this recommendation for none of the children in central Ohio to go to school. When we have an illness that thirty-seven children have been admitted, and. This is a much more catastrophic illness for adults and the elderly, and I understand that that has to be, that there are teachers and staff members in the building, and I totally understand that. But I want to make sure that the board is aware and that the public is aware that the children, especially the children 10 years and under. Are not being significantly affected by this illness, flu in children is way worse. There's a virus called RSV that we see in young children in the winter, where in. Probably three days, there are more than thirty-seven infants admitted to the hospital during RSV season. So I feel like you need to be aware of the the true prevalence of pediatric disease in central Ohio for COVID.
Thank you. Ms. Minio or Mr. Burner, do you have any questions around these?
I I have a lot of questions, unfortunately, and I don't want to monopolize it, so if Ms. Minio has questions, I'll let her go first, because I. I'm actually gotten a little bit more confused by some of the answers that I've heard, so. I don't know if Michelle had other, had some questions, because I probably have about ten to fifteen questions.
I do have just a few questions for Mr. Mazzola. So I'll go out, John, they may be, they may be in line with some of your questions, so we'll see, so I'll go ahead, so. Thank you both for coming tonight from the Health Department. And I, as I'm looking through my list, some of the questions have already, we've already covered the recommendations, we did have doctors involved. I'm looking at the guidance that you guys have provided, the actual document, and it recommends. Strongly recommends school operating remotely, and it also recommends school discontinue extracurricular activities such as sports, band, and other activities. So the question, I guess, that a lot of people in our community have raised is, um. Are those, do those two have to be in alignment, is there ever a scenario where we would say the kids can, should not go back to school because it's inside, but athletics or something that could be done outside? Might be more appropriate, and is there, is there ever like a scenario that that would, that guidance would change, like one, one would change and not the other?
Yeah, we felt it was important to be consistent there between being in person and then, of course, being. Around, it's being around each other in terms of an extracurricular environment. We didn't want to make that distinction, we didn't feel like that was appropriate, and Alex, I don't know if you want to talk about how, you know, we have seen an increase in cases related to.
Yeah, happy to, so with the return to play. Including, you know, the skills training and then the practicing of non-contact sports, and then the conversation around contact sports, you know, we have seen. Increased cases in our children, in our childhood populations. Within our districts, and you know, for instance, you know, we see a case and then we have to. Provide the guidance and the directive around how to identify close contacts exposures, and then we're quarantining. Groups of individuals, so we have seen that, I think one of the data points that I think kind of is a little bit telling for us is that. Our 15 to 19-year-olds within our jurisdiction of Franklin County and our cities that we provide services to is about 23%. However. With the cases within the zero to nineteen age group, they represent 50%, I think 53% of total cases, so certainly, we are seeing. And that, a lot of that, there can be around attributed to those extracurricular hands-on activities.
Thank you, and so with that, so thank you for that, so with that, so one of the other follow-up questions, I guess, that I have for that is. One of the things that you said is that you're going to be meeting with the the local superintendents, like, there's a weekly call, and so at some point in time, when the numbers change, you're going to. Issue another guidance like you have now, saying, hey, the numbers, this is, this is the time where we feel like the numbers have skewed up and or have. Have moved in the right direction, so to speak, and that we're ready to change our recommendations, is that correct, am I understanding that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, and then like one final question that I have for you is. When, because in Franklin County, we're gonna, you know, conceivably, our population's going to change come here August, September, when the turn up the Ohio State, the students. Student population at Ohio State, is that, how is that going to affect our numbers, and how is that going to affect our numbers? Is there any insight on to as to that?
Yeah, Alex, I don't know if you want to talk a bit more about that, but that that's certainly something that we're obviously planning for and working with our colleagues at Columbus Public Health. You know, that's certainly going to impact not just campus, but certainly all of really Franklin, Franklin County, so. We're going to be working with Columbus Public Health to understand the dynamics of how that may or may not be impacting our case counts. But certainly, it's a significant factor, and that when that we're going to be watching very closely.
Thank you, thank you both very much for your time tonight and answering the questions, I, thank you, thank you.
I have one, sorry, John, just really. Is the possibility to participate in non-contact extracurriculars? Something that we, I mean, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around if there's an opportunity for us to participate in things where there isn't contact, like, for example, theater.
Or golf.
Or golf, or cross-country. Or, you know, I'm just thinking of all the the non-contact fall sports that we have, why we would make a sweeping decision to. Suspend those, I I'm trying to just wrap my head around what that, what went into that decision, and maybe that's more for Kim, but if that guidance came from Franklin County. I'd like to understand a little bit more what went into you giving that guidance to school districts.
I'd like to understand a little bit more what went into you giving that guidance to school districts particularly.
Yeah, so with sports and non-contact and contact sports, clearly there's a distinction there in terms of the state guidance. It's been released, the return to play. But again, as we kind of thought about the context with what's going on here in Franklin County, we did not feel like we should be making those distinctions when talking about return to play, extracurricular activities. I think from a practical standpoint, I think, you know, certainly there's an argument to be made about, you know, the differences between golf and football, clearly. I mean, those are obvious. But when we talk about, you know, kids congregating, kids coming together, I think that was really our driving factor in terms of how kids come together in those kind of environments, even though when their actual activity on the field is different, does that congregate kind of activity is what we wanted to stay consistent with.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question, just something that Ms. Minio asked before we launched John's questioning? I, I might have just lost track of the question and the answer. But is there a goal that you have for positive new cases per day at which you would decide, okay, we're now at a level where we could, you know, go, go back into the building? You know, we would recommend to the schools that they, that it, that we would let this stay out and be just distanced and maybe go to, to hybrid? Is there a place that you, you're looking for or do you not have that yet?
So, you know, I think there's a couple of different recommendations out there. One that has really resonated with us is forty new cases per million population. And, you know, that, that for us is an, is an important measure because we really see that as a, as a benchmark for us to be able to do the necessary contact tracing in a timely fashion. Cases above that really stretches our ability to do that in a timely way. So that is a standard that we're hoping to achieve. It's not a hard and fast sort of a, if we don't get to that number, we can't open up the dialogue for a conversation. But for purposes of the discussion, that's something that we're hoping to try to get back to as far as forty cases per million population in our county. So that would just be something working towards.
So it's forty per million, not forty per hundred thousand?
Forty per million.
Okay, so we got a little ways to go before you get to that. And, and is that, do, do we need to get to that number before you would, before you would recommend that we could go into the schools hybrid?
Yeah, so I, I don't think that I would want to lock ourselves into that particular number. It's just, again, a benchmark that we think we need to be striving to try to achieve.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right. I actually have a follow-up to that answer. And the, I guess a caveat before I ask a lot of, I have a lot of tough questions, Mr. Mazzola and Ms. Jones, and this is in no way critical about your, your abilities or, or anything. I just think there's a lot of tough questions and especially I think we've received at least two hundred emails in the last day and a half to two days from our community with a lot of tough questions. And I think it's important to ask these. So I hope you don't take any of these questions as anything other than tough questions for, not only for myself, but for my community and my fellow board members. Because I think it's, it's, it's hard to make decisions without really asking a lot of hard questions. And again, this is nothing personal against either of you and I really appreciate you both being here. So with that said, to kind of follow up on the last answer that you had, the forty, forty cases per million people, which is, I believe, is that four one, four one thousandths of a percent is what the, the rate that you're looking at as kind of a benchmark? Am I maybe miscalculating that? But we're talking about point zero 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 four rate before you would look at recommending going back to full in-person or even hybrid? Did I miss, did I miss something on that answer?
Yeah, I, again, I think that's, that's a benchmark that we, we're going to try to work towards. It's not, that's not something that I feel like we have to achieve before opening up a conversation about changing our recommendations.
Okay. So, so if, let's just say, and, and, and again, I don't, I'm not trying to be difficult. If we had, if we had a hundred cases per one million people, you would still be in the, in the, and again, I know you don't want to tie yourself into a specific number. You, we would be still looking at a, a recommendation from the Franklin County Public Health Department to not go to, to do completely distant learning?
So not, not necessarily. I think what's important is that we look at all of the, the pieces of information. So it would be that, it would be our positivity rate, it would be other indicators within the alert system. And it's about having the dialogue with our school districts. So we didn't feel it was something that we wanted to say. If we don't meet X, Y, and Z, we're not going to be open to the conversation. It's really more about, here are some of the parameters that we're trying to achieve. And we want to have a collaborative conversation with our school districts in real time as we have new information to discuss.
So I, I'm looking at the July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty document that you sent to all Franklin County superintendents. And the, kind of an overall question that I have, have you recommended to every single district in Franklin County to go distance learning?
We have.
And so our, this is based upon a Franklin County, the numbers that you've provided that I've, I've spent a lot of time reviewing in your website and in the document. This is, so Bexley School District, your recommendation to Bexley School District and to Dublin and to New Albany or to Hamilton Township, all of those recommendations are based upon the county-wide numbers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so when I looked at some of the charts on, on your website, for instance, in zip code four three two zero nine, from what I, from what I read from the data that, that you have on your website, at least as of this afternoon, it appeared that four three two oh nine had eighty-eight total cases of, of COVID. In Bexley, there's thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy people. And the entire four three two zero nine zip code, there's twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight people. Even if you just took the eighty-eight positive cases and said every single one of those were in Bexley, we're looking at a point six percent infection rate of COVID in, in Bexley. When I take those numbers and then I look at the numbers that are provided in this, this letter of guidance to the superintendent, it appears that at least from our standpoint in our local district, that we're well below the entire Franklin County. So my question with that background in mind is, have, have you or your team or anyone at Franklin County Public Health tried to parse out and look at specific districts, specific zip codes? Or is this, you're going to use the countywide and you're going to recommend a kind of, for the entire Franklin County, this is what we're going to recommend based upon the county-wide numbers?
Yeah, it was our, it was our determination to make a recommendation for the county and not parse out zip codes or school districts at this time.
Okay. That really helps because just based upon like the numbers that I, that I, at least that I could gather from the data that, that you have published, and there's a lot of data there, so it's, I very much appreciate that. And, and even the data that, the chart that was provided in this July twenty-ninth letter to the superintendents, it appears to me from what I review, and I'm not a statistician, but it appears to me that it looks like that the highest count that we had, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm misinterpreting what this chart is. It's the newly reported, all confirmed improbable cases in Columbus and Franklin County. Is that, these numbers that are on here, for instance, on July, it looks like on July eleventh, there was three hundred and seventy-six cases, is that new cases reported on that day? Or what is, what is that chart in this document representing as far as the numbers?
Those are new cases reported on, yeah, for that day, for the entire county.
Okay, so it looks like in July, July sixteenth, at least according to the graph that, that was in here, July sixteenth was kind of the peak of the, of the cases. And I understand that at that point, that was about, it looks like it's maybe about two and a half to three times as high as it was in June. But it also looks like, at least according to the diet data that I pulled from today, it looks like over the last almost two weeks, ten days to two weeks, that the trend is, it, it looks like that the peak was about two weeks ago. So we are, it appears, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we are trending down over the last ten days to two weeks. Is that correct?
We are starting to see a decline over the last seven to ten, the fourteen days. That's correct.
Okay, good. So my question is, is the, the recommendation to do distance learning, may, maybe kind of a side question to that, the distance learning recommendation was, and maybe I missed it in the document, the distance learning, was there a specified timeline for that? Was that distance learning for the next two weeks or distance learning till September fifteenth? Or is, or was it just start the school year? Because you know that most schools are starting at the middle to end of August, that all school districts start distance learning at least at the start and then leave it up to the districts of when they revisit that? Or, and maybe I missed it in the document and maybe it was discussed at the meeting with the superintendent. So if you could help clarify that for me.
Sure, we did, we intentionally did not include a date or timeframe guidance.
Okay, so kind of a, kind of a tying up that issue, so to speak, the, is, is the recommendation for distance learning based upon the number of cases that were occurring in the middle of July? Is it based upon trending? Is it based upon fear that if we did go back to school, that these numbers would go back up? What is the, kind of the, like the, kind of like the key evidence? I know there's a lot of factors, but what is the key factor that you are looking at, at FCPH? You and your team in, in the recommendations for, not only for when we start school, but as we move forward? Is it a trend? Is it a fear of increase? Or is it based upon just the raw numbers?
So it's certainly, we're looking at the overall trends. And we're trying to balance, and I, I tried to mention this in my opening remarks, I tried to balance the timing of this as such as what we were seeing in the data relative to knowing that school was opening in several weeks. And so we tried to balance how and when to provide that guidance to our school districts in a way that you could then take that information and make some decisions on that. Again, you know, we didn't want to continue to wait and then find ourselves in a position to not give you an opportunity to have this dialogue. So it was kind of a, a balancing act in terms of the timing of the data and then the timing of the back to school.
Great, thank you. So a little bit more, a couple more questions about the return to school issue on the July twenty-ninth document that was issued yesterday. And I, I do know there's been a little bit of update on your website with the data, which is very much appreciated, like I said. There are a couple of things in this document that I had questions about. The, it says approximately seventeen percent of all cases have been in persons from ages zero to nineteen percent. When I did the calculation, I think Ms. Jones mentioned this earlier, I, I believe it's around thirteen percent. I don't know if there's a huge difference between thirteen and seventeen percent, but my understanding it was thirteen percent as opposed to seventeen percent. So I'm curious of where the seventeen percent number came from.
Yeah, and, and if I may, Joe, I think that's a really good question. And on that document, Joe, we are showing the entire picture of Franklin County. The numbers I referenced were for our jurisdiction only. So our colleagues in Columbus, I, I mentioned that our median has been skewing down and right now we're sitting at forty-one. When I looked at their report today, they're actually sitting at a thirty-six median. So they're seeing a younger population, even more so than we are in, within our jurisdiction.
Who is that? I'm sorry, who's seeing that?
Columbus, Columbus Public Health jurisdiction, so they serve city of Columbus and Worthington. So, yep.
So, so Columbus's numbers, the city of Columbus and Worthington numbers are part of the number that, that the Franklin, that you guys use in your numbers. Is that correct?
Correct, for that document that was shared with our superintendents. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because when I looked at the jurisdiction overall, it looked like it was thirteen point four. Anyway, the other, there's another bullet point in here. There are clusters of cases associated with sports and other return to play activities. I couldn't find anything on the website in regard to that. Is there data on that about the, because there's been very little return to play activities over the summer. And so I'm trying to, where it says there are clusters of cases, what, what exactly does that mean? And where is that data coming from or is that data point, that bullet point coming from in this recommendation?
Yeah, so that data is coming from our school districts where we, that we work with during non-COVID times too, right? So this is really coming from those school athletic directors and school nurses through all of our districts that are seeing those cases among their student athletes.
Okay, is there somewhere to get this information from or is that just, is that verbal reports? Is there, are those written reports?
Those are within our line lists, within our internal databases.
Okay.
Can I jump in really quickly and just ask, what do you classify as a cluster? Is that one or two people or is that like five to set, like what's the, what's that number?
Yeah, the technical term for a cluster or, you know, even a quote-unquote outbreak would be two or more.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's a good question, thinking this much, because I wasn't sure. For instance, we've had two positive cases in all of the sports returned, returned activities. And I'm wondering, is that the cluster in specific sports? When there's one in each sport, would that be considered a cluster?
No, not necessarily. It really has to do with, if they're doing different sports, unless, you know, perhaps they intermix within skills training, that could be considered a relation, but if they're truly doing separate activities, then, then no, that would not be.
Okay. And, and I don't know all the terms. I mean, there are a lot of new terms that were out, we've all learned over the last four and a half months. The positivity rate of testing has varied between eight and thirteen percent. What, what exactly is the positive, positivity rate of testing?
So that, that's simply the number of tests that come back positive as compared to all the tests that have been completed.
Okay, and that's Franklin County again. So, and I noticed on the website that we are still in a level three or red. That's, that's kind of, we're, we're, that's concurrent with the state advisory system too. We're using the same system. Is that right?
That is, that is, yes, we're referencing the Ohio Public Health Advisory System.
So when it says very high exposure and spread as, under level three versus increased exposure and spread under level two, is there somewhere where I can find that those things are defined? I, I'm a lawyer by practice, so when I see something that, that, where there's something like a quantitative definition, like very high exposure, I want to know, is there a specific number tied to very high exposure? Is that a percentage? And how is that different than increased exposure or active exposure under level one?
So it might be easier, I can, I can put the link in the chat feature and you can reference that.
Okay.
That way everyone will have that. Would that be okay?
Yes, that would be fine. Because, like I said, I'm just trying to, trying to get some information and, and I appreciate everyone bearing with me. But I, I do have a lot of questions and, and a lot of, with the number of emails and questions that I thought of and a number of great questions that we've got from our community members. I think this was asked when, with these meetings with the superintendents, is it all the Franklin County superintendences is a Zoom meeting and you discuss with all the superintendents, get feedback from them? And is this a weekly, kind of a weekly meeting that you're having with them?
So they will be weekly moving forward. We've committed to doing that pursuant to our conversation on Tuesday. Been very fortunate to be able to have those collective conversations with all the superintendents through the Education Services Center, Central Ohio. I would say we've been over the course of, since the pandemic started, monthly at the, at the very least and more often than not, so very regular communication.
So, and I think this is asked earlier, I know that you have a medical director and of course you and Ms. Jones, that again, I, I can't tell you much, appreciate your time and, and answering a lot of questions. And I, not trying to, to be difficult, but I, there are some questions, difficult questions that I think need asked. But with that said, you have your medical director and yourself and Ms. Jones. Who else are, when the, when this recommendation on July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty is made, I know that you're listed on the bottom and you're the, the Health Commissioner, Mr. Mazzola. Who else is giving you input on these recommendations besides your medical director and? Who else is giving you input on these recommendations besides your medical director and, um, the, the Franklin County Public Health Board?
Well, as I talked about, certainly we have a lot of internal conversations and absolutely rely on Dr. Sullivan and Alex's medical expertise. Um, I can tell you, as I mentioned, we consulted, um, a group called Resolve to Save Lives, uh, which is led by Dr. Tom Frieden. Uh, Dr. Tom Frieden is the former CDC director and we spoke to him directly about this guidance.
Is that what that group in, is he, was he actively engaged? And I don't know that group. What did you say was the name of it?
It's a group called Resolve to Save Lives.
Okay.
We are, uh, we're collaborating with them.
What was his name again? I'm sorry.
Dr. Tom Frieden.
Tom Frieden, okay.
And I think, you know, pretty soon we're going to need to let these doctors, uh, or these, um, specialists move on and, and get, um, get on with their evenings. So maybe we can make sure and wrap up our questions.
Yeah, I, I understand, Ms. Snowden. I, I think that there's a lot of questions here before, and I, and I'm trying to move through this. But there are, there are some questions that I think this is vitally important and I appreciate their time. I'm going to try to get through this as much as I can, but I don't want to miss anything either. But with that said, um, I want to move on to, uh, extracurricular activities. And, and I know a couple of questions were asked about that. Is there any reason, um, why extracurriculars are being tied into the curricular delivery at all on the recommendations?
Uh, so I guess I would just say again, um, you know, we didn't feel like we wanted, we didn't make a distinction between, um, asking our kids to learn remotely and then saying it's okay to come together, um, and have those, uh, opportunities for the virus to spread in those settings as well.
Is there, is there, is there data on that, or is that just, just kind of more of an opinion that, that Franklin County Public Health Board is making? Because, I mean, frankly, it's, it seems as though, especially with the variety of sports that we have, golf, tennis, even maybe cross country, there are, and even activities that are outdoor activities. It, it seems to me that in, in maybe, and I'm not, I have to make these decisions for our district, but I'm trying to figure out the recommendation for all extracurriculars to be canceled completely as a blanket statement without, again, parsing these out. This isn't something that's a Franklin County Board, Franklin County Public Health Department, that you are comfortable making those decisions and saying, well, we're willing to do this. Or are you just saying, if, if we're recommending full distance learning, we don't think the kids should be doing anything extracurricular because we're not even in school?
Uh, that would be a fair characterization, yes.
Okay. I have two more questions and then I will, I will be finished. And so part of, part of the questions about the extracurricular activities. We have, we have a number of, of community members and parents talking about the, the social and emotional wellbeing of our, of our students. And if, if as a board, we adopt distance learning, that we're also saying we're not permitting any extracurricular, curricular activities at all. When that decision was made to saying, well, we're doing distance learning, we want to, want to do extracurriculars was, and, and I'm not saying that you did or you didn't, but was the, that kind of social, emotional wellbeing of our students to say, okay, we can't be in school with our friends and we can't be in school with our teachers. But we have at least some extracurriculars that we would be able to do. And this recommendation, uh, was that taken into consideration, even though it's extracurricular versus curricular? With that, that issue seems to me, um, to be critical in, in when we're talking extracurriculars, whether it's sports, whether it's theater, whether it's music, whatever it is. Those, those recommendations, uh, of, of completely canceling all extracurriculars, the social, emotional wellbeing of our students, were that taken into consideration?
I can, I can tell the Board of Education that was, uh, absolutely taken under consideration. We talked a lot about that. And I will stress how we recognize how important, uh, from a social, emotional standpoint, that in-person learning as well as the extracurricular activities are to our students. We absolutely acknowledge that.
Okay. One last question that, um, that, that I have, just kind of generally about your recommendations to the superintendent is have you, have you received any kind of, um, pressure from outside sources, um, from Franklin Public, Franklin County Public Health, from the governor's office, from different organizations, from anything that, that you took into consideration before making this? And I'm not saying that there was or there's anything bad about it. I just was curious about, other than the, what you've mentioned, the other input and other opinions that you took into consideration before making this recommendation? Other than the superintendents and the people that are in the Franklin County Public Health and that organization that you mentioned?
No, not, no, not, not a formal sense. No. I mean, we do receive emails. We have, we've received a lot of emails since Tuesday. Um, and we have, we've received emails of, for the better part of several weeks. Uh, and I think there's interesting that as the cases have gone up, uh, we have received emails, uh, about, uh, school openings. But I can assure that, uh, for, to this Board of Education, to everyone listening, uh, that we took, uh, an, an objective review of the data and made the determination based on that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, I want to let you go. I have just one last question for you that I hope you can, give us just some thoughts on briefly. So with childcare centers now being allowed, um, more open, um, and they haven't had any outbreaks in childcare centers, I think since March. So why childcare centers and not schools?
Yeah, that's a great question. I actually got that question on the Reynoldsburg Board of Education meeting a couple hours ago. So, um, the way that I would answer that is, you know, the state has provided, um, permissive guidance for all of these different sectors to open, whether it's childcare settings, bars and restaurants, other facilities. Um, and, and really I, we view it as, uh, you know, that permissive guidance to, to now be able to make those decisions locally. So now childcare settings in this example have that opportunity to bring more, uh, children back into that, into that setting pursuant to those, uh, those ratios that have already been set, uh, prior to the pandemic. Our goal is to work with those childcare settings to help them, uh, one, inform those decisions about whether or not they do want to, uh, do that. And then two, of course, uh, to do that in, in a way that would be consistent with the guidelines that have been provided by the state. You know, there are state conversations that we, uh, obviously aren't privy to and are not, are a part of. Our role at the Health Department is to either provide local, uh, guidance, like we've done here for our school districts. Or in the context of where, when state guidance is issued, our role is really to facilitate any kind of technical assistance to those operators pursuant to those permissive guidance.
Interesting. Thank you very much. All right. I think, I know we need to let you go. I very much appreciate your, your patience and perseverance with us through this. So we will continue on with our other sections. And wish you a good night.
Okay. Thank you so much for inviting us this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your expertise.
Okay, so.
Marley.
Yes.
Um, I have a quick question for Dr. Miller, if I could.
Yes.
Um. Is, does the district have any sort of, um, legal liability? If we were to adopt a direction that did not strictly follow Franklin County guidelines?
Um, I had a brief conversation with legal counsel today. It's guidance, it's not a requirement.
Would the, would the school district be able to?
I, I would have to do, we would have to do a little more research into our liability. But even if you're not liable, that doesn't mean you can't be accused or sued or, 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 you know, have to deal with the legal ramifications of, of that.
Would the district, would the district be able to employ, and I'm just brainstorming, listening to everything? Would the district be able to employ sort of a waiver system like we did for athletics? So for example, you know, for our kids to resume some sort of training, exercises and what have you with the team, you know, we had to sign, um, a, a document or waiver of sorts, uh, for them to come out and participate in that. Is that something that, um, we would, we would or could adopt as a, a school district? If we were to, you know, maybe go against guidelines?
I haven't asked our legal counsel that specific question, but I have asked in general questions around waivers and you can ask for them. That doesn't mean you're automatically protected. So this would require some additional research, um, and guidance from our legal counsel.
And I'm sorry to, to dump that on you. It just kind of, I made a note while everybody was talking and, and thought I'd ask if, if you had or not. So thank you.
That's a good question. If, if I may, um, I have the entire administrative team here and they've put in a really long day and are putting in really long days. I'm wondering if there are any questions specific to the learning experience about the plan that we could ask them so that maybe I could also let them go. Um, obviously I'll stay on here as long as, as you want, but, um, I want to, I want to respect their time as well. And, um, as, as we've said, we've been, we've been sharing this information over a number of weeks. And I want to make sure they, you get a chance to ask them any questions about specifics of the learning. And again, knowing that we're still in the planning phases with a lot of this, but, um, I want to, want, want to give them that opportunity if you have questions for them.
I actually did have a question for, um, I guess that would be Ms. Abraham. She had mentioned, hi Jill, um, mentioned that, um, middle school is looking at a block scheduling. But we're not looking at doing block scheduling for high school, or are we still kind of sorting out the plan? I, I guess I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll invite Mr. Cottle to join the conversation as well. Over the last guys, couple of weeks, both Mr. Cottle and Ms. Robbins have been working with their, uh, teacher leadership teams to develop their plans. And so, um, I know just as recent as this week, Mr. Cottle and I were in conversation about the potential block scheduling at the middle level. We are not considering that at the high school level, but Jason, I'm going to let you jump in and talk a little bit about the thinking of your team.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so this is something we're still exploring. I'm probably going to have, come to a decision in the next week about that for sure. But we, uh, our last, uh, planning meeting as a building, we began talking about the pros and cons of a, uh, block schedule where kids would only attend half their classes, but for twice as long each day. Um, and based on our experiences in the spring, we thought that that is, was something worth exploring. But, uh, we have some pros and cons. So my, my teacher team asked me to come back to them with a draft of both what a, a single schedule would look like and a block schedule, uh, based on some parameters that they gave me. Uh, and so I've, I've crafted those and we'll be reviewing those tomorrow as a team. There, uh, there are logistical challenges to us operating, um, in a different model than the high school, between shared staff and students taking classes, middle school students taking classes at the high school. So those are some of the logistical hurdles that we would have to clear, um, to make it work. But, um, we did not want to be, we, we wanted to really think about this time differently and not be bound by the things that typically bind us in a, in a school day, uh, and see if there were some, um, opportunities to work differently based on what we knew about kids. But, um, we're, tomorrow is when I'm meeting with my building leadership team to, uh, review those, uh, drafts that I've put together.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I have another question for Jill. When you are talking about live teaching as one of the things, so, I mean, I have an opinion of what that looks like. But I think mine's probably like maybe a lot of parents antiquated in that when I was in elementary, middle or high school, we had teachers stand in front and lecture and we took notes and then we left. Um, and I know from you all that our education doesn't look like that anymore. Our 21st century learning doesn't look like that anymore. So it's a lot more challenging to, you know, just put a camera up and video somebody talking. I mean, that would have been easier in my day if there weren't. But in this day, can you tell me what live teaching looks like?
So, and your question is a great question because you're right. We even explored the capacity when we thought about the hybrid model of being able to, um, be able to record our teachers teaching for the other group that was not going to be in on those days. And, and our teachers shared some really great perspective and said, that would be really hard for me because I'm not a stationary person. I, I might share instruction. I might, um, engage kids in conversation. I might model, um, a skill set. But then I, I get kids in groups and I move around to groups and I talk to, to groups of students and let them problem solve and think together. Or I let kids have independent practice and I move around and I conference with students. So, um, when we look at what does that look like in a distance environment? Well, live teaching could be having their whole group in front of them and being able to engage kids in a lesson. I'm just going to say for 20 or 30 minutes, it could be a facilitated discussion and it really depends on the content area. Especially with our older students, but it could be a facilitated discussion. It could be, uh, a math lesson, which, you know, again, student is, or a teacher is demonstrating, um, on, you know, their board and being able to have the camera situated so it's capturing them in the process of doing math. For our youngest grades, it would be, it could be the same thing. It could be a teacher that has a whole group engaged in a read aloud. Or it could be, um, a focused conversation around some science, social studies topics of that sort. So what it looks like, it, it, it won't be standard in every content area and it won't work even across every grade level. Especially, especially because of the developmental level of our students and their capacity to sit for a long period of time. And especially in a distance environment, their capacity to interact is just different.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks. I was just trying to give, um, myself and people listening a little perspective about, you know, what, what it's going to actually look like. Knowing, as you say, it's different K through 12. Um, and then the other question I had for you was just that you had mentioned that you, I, I just want to clarify. Did you say that you have now determined that in middle school and high school, the device needs will have been met? So we know everybody has, and is that per student or is that per household? And how do we do that?
So what, what we've been working on, I really have to give a shout out to the administrative team at the middle level, our middle and high school levels. Because they've been, um, working really hard to connect with students and families. But we asked how many, um, families would need an additional device so that all of their middle through high school students had access to a, a personal device that they could use for their learning? And so what we've been doing is capturing the numbers, um, what, how many additional devices do we need to ensure that our six through 12 students would have that? Um, we made that a priority to focus on our six through 12 students because of really the rigor of their content and their learning and really their capacity to be, um, more independent and utilizing their technology in a learning platform. So we are very, very close. Um, Ms. Robbins could probably give us a better perspective. I know Mr. McMillan was on earlier. We're very close to finalizing those numbers. And we've been working with Mr. Pettit and believe that we are going to have, um, the devices that we need to fill in those gaps for six through 12 families.
That's great. Thank you. And just to be clear, that's a different, um, a different task than the ongoing one-to-one, um, Chromebook commitment that, that we, um, are working on with BEF. And that's because, just so people who haven't heard this, um, may know, with the issues of, um, surrounding COVID and shipping and, um, procurement of all sorts of different parts, we're having trouble getting those, um, the Chromebooks. So I really appreciate, appreciate everybody stepping in and trying to make sure that this need can be met when we start school.
Can I jump in Marley really quick?
Yeah.
Okay. So first of all, I want to like, um, say thank you, Ms. Abrams. And like to, to your point, I can personally attest to the fact that Mr. McMillan and Mr. Cottle were very generous in answering the questions and helping me determine like what my student, my high school and middle school students' technology needs were. So, um, I can assess firsthand that that's happening and it was very, yeah, I appreciated very much the, the conversation back and forth. It helped me figure out what we needed. So that being said, I do think it would be super valuable for Mr. Pettit really quick to kind of review. We've had some questions about, um, the computer, when, when the one-to-one is going to roll out. And I think, I think it's super helpful for people to understand, just, just to hear a quick review of like what the process looks like. That it's not just, um, order the computers and they show up. That kind of, can you kind of, are you still, are you on, Mr. Pettit? Can you give us a quick, a, a, a two-minute review?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we, can you, uh, there. There. Now, try us again. Are you clear? Now. Am I the only person who is, has feedback on?
Hear him either.
We can't hear you. That's ironic, Brad, our technology person.
We dealt with that at our last board meeting too. While, while he's working that out real quick, Ms. Abraham, can I ask you really quickly? Do you have like a target timeline to be ready for all of the fall instruction? And I know it's difficult when, you know, teachers are not in the building and, and so we're, we're shooting for this date. For them to come back. I, I think my, the first, the note that I made was five, was five days sufficient? And maybe that's more for Dr. Miller. Is five days sufficient to get teachers, you know, ramped up? Work out all the tech needs, because there, there will be some. I, I think Ms. Hodge mentioned at the BEF presentation. And it, it like really just sort of opened my mind, the challenges that teachers might have when they're in the, the, the teaching and learning environment. And there was a tech difficulty with a student and they don't have the, a way to help them. So to me, like. Helping them be able to hit the ground running day one, should we be in this format? Like, does five days, it just doesn't sound like enough to me. And, and so I'm curious if you have a target timeline to be ready. Before the five days in terms of what sort of learning structures and plans you're going to be in, because I just. And it's no one's fault. I just want to acknowledge that I know it's no one's fault, but the race to, against the clock just gives me anxiety. And, and that's just me. I can't imagine all of you. So I'm just curious there.
So let me, let me give you a little background just in terms of what the work has been over the last couple of weeks. And then what are the steps over the next couple of weeks that will get us to August 24th, which is when our students are starting? So as we've referenced multiple times and Ms. Powers has been a part of one of the work groups that's been working on the learning experience. We have had a number of teachers who have volunteered their time and are working either with. Ms. Robbins or Mr. Cottle or have been working with myself at the elementary level to develop what is a meaningful learning structure. And I, I would say, I think I talked to Ms. Robbins today. I'm not sure if she said they've met eight times. Would that be right, Ms. Robbins?
Seven, and we have one more scheduled for next week following the final decisions. Yeah.
And these are, these are extensive work sessions. So our teacher leaders have been working through different structures, different plans, their problem solving. And so we're getting to the point now. How, how we can start to begin to roll those out to the teachers who haven't been part of these work groups. And so that looks different at each level. But I've worked with the elementary group as an example today and we started to look at the next three weeks. How do we take the teacher leaders from these work groups, take it back out into staff who want to get the information as early as next week? And then how do we further than use the five days that are in for teachers who didn't participate in the previous weeks to get caught up to the learning? We know that the five days prior to students starting have to have built in time for teachers to really design their learning platforms. The principals and I worked together today and in fact, we're together next week for a planned day to lay out the entire timeline of those five days. The week of August 17th to support our teachers so that they are ready for roll on August 24th. Now, you are, you're absolutely right. There's a lot that has to be done between now and then. Our high school and middle school principals are working on a plan to distribute devices to our students who need them in six, 12. Our principals and teachers are also challenged, they, to come up with a plan for just resource distribution in general, textbooks. Consumable materials, things that even our elementary kiddos would need at home in order to be best prepared for their learning. The thing that we need to remember in this particular distance experience, different than the spring, that was during a stay-at-home order. So we didn't have the opportunity to exchange materials or to be able to provide, I'll just give an example, exchange books out. For, for our youngest readers. And so we're looking at how we can do that within this particular structure. Because we don't have the same strict confinement as we did in the spring. So I feel that. We've, we have plans laid out for the next several weeks, including professional development that is being offered by our coaches. Both in the next couple of weeks and then in the week of August 17th. So is it a short timeline? It is a short timeline. There has been some really powerful thinking and some really supportive tools and structures. That are being put in place so that those teacher leaders can share them with their colleagues and they're not independently having to problem solve.
Can I just jump in on that for a sec too, since I've been in elementary school learning meetings, which have been, I mean, we've had. Hours and hours and hours of them over the last several weeks. I just, I'm, I'm gonna say that there are already templates that the teachers who've been participating in that. That have been prepared for every minute of a first grader's day, every minute of, you know, a fourth grader's day or, you know, each grade level. Templates have already been prepared on, and, and I will mention here, because it's something that I've seen in a lot of the questions coming in from families. Literacy and numeracy are being put at the front. Literacy and numeracy are at the, at the forefront of what's being discussed and the teachers are very energized around how to, how to manage that. Each individually, they're also working on projects together. They're working on how to collaborate. So that for certain areas that aren't literacy and numeracy, they can rely on other teachers in their same building, in their same grade to help them, okay? Who here really would be the best person to help us think through social studies for the first nine weeks? It's just as one example. So. It's, it's incredible how much daily planning and preparation of lessons has already gone on as, you know. And when we talk about we're into a short amount of time, I just have to remind the board and, and our community. That even though our teachers aren't paid to work over the summer, these teachers and the, I keep forgetting to mention the coaches, but. Coaches were on our call today and they've been on many of them. They're working incredibly hard as, on a voluntary basis, most of these folks, to get us, to get all of the schools ready. So that, you know, just so much professional development has already been done over the summer. There's a bunch planned for August. There's also, we have talked many times about providing kind of like professional development, but, but, but. Meaningful opportunities for parents and families to learn about what their students are going to be going through, what, what their. You know, how does this technology work? I think it came up a minute ago about teachers getting, Alyssa, I think you were talking about. Teachers getting pulled away because there's a technology problem. We have made a, we've had a lot of discussion and I think there's been a commitment to stick to just one. What's the word I'm looking for? I'm sorry, platform. That's. So that, so that parents don't have to be going to three different places. And it was a really tough decision. And teachers talked about it at great length. What was the best thing for the student? What was the best thing for the parent and the family and the community? And how could we teach all of our, get all of our teachers on the, on one platform so that it would be? And so that's another, so it would be easier and more straightforward for everybody. That's another one of many areas where the teachers are collaborating. Working together to put things into, we have started to have drop boxes so that information can be shared across schools, across grades. It's the amount of work that is going on right now to answer the question that Alyssa has raised and that I'm hearing in the community about how are our teachers gonna be prepared? I'm really, really excited about how much work has gone on and has been going on for weeks to, to accomplish that.
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you better. And I, I wanna make sure we get back to some of the questions for our administrators so they can hopefully be done with their evening.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna add just a little bit to that as well. Sorry about the microphone earlier. If you remember a year ago, I lost my voice entirely. So this is a.
This is a step up.
Little bit of an upgrade. So in terms of our support for teachers, you know, over the next few weeks, you know, we'll be providing. At the start of August, a few different PD opportunities around remote classroom and the learning management systems as we've discussed. Toby Fisher, our new tech integration coach is developing that work along with the instructional coaches. And a lot, a lot of what he's developing is gonna be self-paced. So if someone wants to take it on individually, they can as well. But we'll have them leading that for the folks that really need that extra help. We'll take that work and provide more options that week before school starts as well and add even more options as we go. Toby and I are also developing some open hours times early on. So when folks need help, we can continue similarly to what was. Like in the spring and in terms of tech support for parents and students, we'll. Take that same approach, but beef it up a little bit, knowing the schedule. We'll have a help desk structure with our email contact, but phone numbers as well. And assign tech staff those windows to meet those increased needs in a structure like this. And we create some videos and. Have it more parent or student directed to support that as well.
Great. Thank you. And then Mr. Pettit, would you mind going back to Ms. Minio's question? Just a real brief summary of where we are with our one-to-one?
Sure. So back in May, when we, we were starting to head in this direction, we really needed to. Create an RFP for the bidding process for such a large order like this. And then on, I think it was very much at the end of May, when we knew we were doing, the moment. That the Board of Education approved and we were getting the tremendous support from the Education Foundation, you know, we ordered immediately and started moving down that road. But over those several weeks, I think, so did several thousand other schools and. That's when we were getting sort of alerted that there was gonna be a delay in those devices arriving. So there's been no change in the status of our Chromebook order. We're still being told that we'll get a two-week notice. When they know they'll ship and the worst case scenario is November. Now I'm hopeful that they're just being extremely cautious, but we're preparing for what we're being told. After talking to CDWG, which is the, the vendor for the order, this week I asked them to reach out to other field folks. For Dell, who makes the Chromebooks, just to make sure that what we're being told is what others are hearing. And he did confirm that. Other districts are getting those same kind of delays. There are some districts in Ohio that decided to go one-to-one last week. And they were told to expect their devices in January. So, you know, I'm continuing to talk with them every week and both from the vendor and the manufacturer. And they're looking to procure devices from other manufacturers as a backup, but I'm, I'm not sure how much of a likely scenario that is.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just think that little bit of review or reminder that like we have to go through like a process, doesn't just happen and then, you know, there, there's a limited supply. Because everybody else is asking too. I appreciate the work you've done and thank you for that little review. Can I say one more thing? So I wanna go back to Victoria and Jill and say, first of all, thank you both for that, the update you provided on the education, the, the subgroups and stuff. And I just think it's really, I, I appreciate the fact that you highlighted that the work, a lot of the work that has been done. Was on a volunteer basis. So I wanna like thank everybody who took time off of their summer to contribute to what our learning plan is gonna look like for the, for the fall. I think, I think it's, I, I, I'm beyond appreciative. So I just had to put that in there. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Pettit or Ms. Abraham?
I actually have a couple of questions. Shocking, I know. So. Ms. Abraham, I, and, and as maybe a lot of you know that. Our administrators, I know, work so hard and spend so much time. I, I can't applaud you enough and that's across the board. And listening to everyone present their different perspectives and different areas that they're working on. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And that goes from Dr. Miller down the line to everyone that, that is on this call. A couple of kind of general questions and, and this was in an email that we got that really struck a chord with me and, and. I know the spring was a difficult, thrown together. The question that, that I think is important to me. Is the measures of success. I know that we're trying to get the nuts and bolts and I have extreme confidence in our administrative team and our teachers and putting together a curriculum. No matter if we're in-person, hybrid or distance learning. But if we're distance learning and even hybrid, what kind of measures of success are we going to be using? And kind of to go with that to kind of combine questions is the accountability of, of. How the, the curriculum is delivered in all areas, but even if you just talk about a regular, everyday curriculum. So if you can kind of answer that. That would help me in, in making a decision on Tuesday.
Absolutely. So the one thing that I, I think has become a consistent statement when I'm talking with our leaders. Or when I've been working with our teacher team is that. The expectation is that we provide an exceptional educational experience starting August 24th. And regardless of what learning plan we are going to be on, it's going to be an exceptional experience because that's what our community expects of us. And that's what our students deserve from us. And so we have to look back at what has made us exceptional in educating our students previously. And one, it's the rich curriculum. And, and I think when I look at the planning that's happened now compared to what happened in spring. They're very intentional about how to deliver this content and equally important, to be able to monitor student engagement. And progress in the learning. And that was something that was hard for us in the spring was to get a system sometimes of turning in assignments. Sometimes it was really hard to get students to engage. Sometimes our parents and their efforts to be super helpful. Were also very helpful, helpful to their students in completing work. And, and so sometimes it was very difficult for us to get engaged on where our students were. When we look at how will we know, what are our measures of success? One, we want our students engaged. We want them all engaged. And so we've established, we've talked about, you know, if students aren't engaged, then we're gonna develop, need to develop very specific plans for them. We've also talked about how do, how do we connect and what might need to be different for them to ensure that they, that they get engaged. Because we don't have. We don't have time to allow kids to slip in the cracks here. We've got to make sure that we've got everybody moving forward. We're also talking about assessment from the very beginning. The question I posed to principals, we had a fourth quarter. We can assume that there are gaps in their learning. We need to find the gaps at the beginning. And we need to design very specific learning plans for our kids and make sure that we provide the differentiated instruction to support them. So our beginning assessments, our pre-assessments that our teachers will be looking at across grid levels and across content areas. Will give us the baseline to say this is where they started as we continue to progress, monitor our way through. We'll also look, a measure of success will be our students' feedback to us about the learning experience. And certainly our parents' feedback about the learning experience. We've talked very candidly, there are things that did not work in the spring. And the, we have the feedback that says that. And so we've been very intentional in thinking about what didn't work. But the other challenge that I've given regularly is we are not planning to redo the fourth quarter. We are planning to do the first quarter of a brand new year and we have to plan accordingly. A first quarter with new students who don't have relationships with us is very different. And so. Principals have continued to carry those messages forward. The, the structures that they're designing are evidence. First and foremost, that we see the need to do some things differently or to be very intentional and even be very clear in our communication to our families. To understand why does this exist in this format for our students? So I think from the development of the structure. I think being able to start with some of our beginning of the year assessments as a baseline. And then to be able to progress, monitor from there will also let us know, is this working? Are students moving forward in their learning? Because our goal is new content and moving forward, which is very different than where we were in that fourth quarter.
And so.
If I could add to this a little bit, it's, it's one of the reasons that in the plan you see. That we talked about adhering to a student day and the teacher day as much as possible. Part of that is stability, but also because. As, as Ms. Abraham just indicated, this is about new content and moving forward. And that's going to take a school day, a full day. And we know that everyone needs to be working in that realm in order to make that happen. As we, as we've already said, we were sort of thrown into this, literally had about, you know, 48 hours notice that we're being closed. And so this is a different environment. And so this is a different environment because we can plan, because we can plan for the moving forward, and it is very possible to do that. And in terms, I've received the same emails about how is this going to be better? And that's again, part of why I'm asking to make the decision early, as early as possible, as opposed to waiting longer to see what happens. I know this is certainly commingled with the cases, but the planning of the educational side can't happen overnight. It's literally what we had to do in the spring. But also, and we'll put this information out depending on how the vote goes on Tuesday, but we will want to hear from our parents immediately if there's a problem. We will want people to reach out to their teachers right away to let them know if there's a problem, because that will be even more important in a distant environment. And so we'll provide additional supports for families and students on how to do that. But if something isn't working, we need to find out right away that it's not working or that children aren't being able to be successful. And I think, not that people weren't letting us know if there were problems, but I think there was a lot of just as we were all dealing with the pandemic at the beginning, at the same time, I think there was, well, this is okay. It will be okay, they'll get better. But this is a different, as Jill said, this is a different environment. And we'll need to hear from parents and students if there are issues. We're going to need our teachers to let us know what their challenges are. And the other piece too is, it's one of the reasons, back to, I think it was Ms. Mitchell's question, starting school on the 24th, the longer we push the start of school for students, the less instructional time we have. And we know that instructional time is a premium anyway. In any, in an ideal environment, we don't like to lose instructional time. And so the longer we push the start of school for students, the less time we have to provide instruction. So hopefully that helps as well.
Yeah, so just, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds. Ms. Abraham said something that makes, that I didn't think about, not being an educator. The initial assessments, how are those? Again, I apologize for getting too much into the weeds. How are those going to be done? Are those like teacher assessments, are they online? How are those initial assessments to see where those gaps are? Are they being done like the first day of school? How is that going to be done?
Well, we've worked through a couple of different plans depending on the model. But what I would say is, we have typical, depending on the grade level, we have certain assessments that might have been online previously. We give the math assessment and reading and math, and that would have been for students in grades one through eight. A lot of the vendors, because of the times that we're living in, have adapted some of their assessments so that we could do them remotely if needed. Now, we've not landed on that yet. But we've also talked about what would happen if we brought in small groups of kids, because that was the most appropriate way we could assess them. So that's just something that we're exploring. We also have things that our teachers have designed on their own. So teacher-created assessments that they might give at the beginning of a course. We've also, as I mentioned, a lot of vendors, even our, some of our just general curriculum resources, our Bridges Math Resource has moved some of their assessments and made them accessible to our teachers. I believe we talked about this today with the elementary group online. So we're lucky, because some of the vendors are responding to the time and making those tools something that we could do virtually. But we've also even talked about the capacity. You know, if you're working with a small group of students, our teachers have been very creative in creating the assessment tools online that they could sit with a student who's zooming with them at home and complete some of those individual assessments. But that's where that relationship with parent becomes really important, because when we're in those assessment situations, we really want to know what their child knows. And sometimes I think that's probably hard for us as parents to not want to be super helpful. But we are exploring those very things. How could we do this virtually? Because we do need to find where those gaps are from last spring. And then be very thoughtful in our planning and make meaningful connections with the curriculum as they move forward. But I can assure you, at all three levels, those very conversations are happening. I've asked the principals to take it to their teachers, how will we know about our students? And that starts on day one, and it doesn't mean with the test. Sometimes it just means, let's talk about who you are and what your goals are for this year. And what's going on in your life, what's been going on since last spring? So day one, we will start to get to know them. But we've kind of mapped out over the first two, three weeks where we start to build in some of those opportunities for very specific assessment within different courses and/or grade levels to learn about our students.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions. Dr. Miller, you mentioned about the student or the school day. And I know it's hard to compare to what happened in spring. Those school days will be, I think that Ms. Abraham mentioned it earlier, the school day will be trying to be a full, rigorous day, starting in the morning, having our teachers available during the day for our students, and something regularly going on during the day, especially for elementary students.
Can I respond to that one?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, elementary is unique in the planning in two ways. One, they are the group that would be most likely to be in a daycare situation. And so that can impact their access to technology and/or potential adult support. So we're having to plan, recognizing that is the situation of families. So our teachers will plan a day of learning. And when you think about students being there from 8:15 until 3:00, again, that day involves lunch, restroom breaks, and all those things. So it's not all that amount of time and learning. But it will allow time for kids who are able to to be able to connect in with their teacher at different points in the day. So they're scheduling, how do I rotate my groups? How do I do a whole class Zoom lesson? But for families who can't have their child online at that time, they'll have access to the content, for example, when they get home at the end of their workday. The content and the flow of the day, the lessons and the video will be available to them as well. So we're responsive, and we know that that is a challenge for our families with their youngest kids.
Okay. I just had a couple more questions. This is for Ms. McMasters. The
Actually, John?
Yeah.
Do you want to, let's just, not to make anybody else wait any longer, but if we can let some of, I know Dr. Miller's concerned about letting some of our administrators go. So if we could just, does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Abraham or Mr. Pettit? Okay.
Can I ask one very quick question?
Yes.
I just want to, this is something that I've seen in several of the community questions and emails that have come in, and I don't know the answer to this, even though I know we've talked about it. And maybe just that we're talking about it. Folks have asked about, in terms of these assessments and in terms of the teachers moving forward with their new class of students, is there consideration being given to looping back to the teachers that we had last year in some fashion to get input or to help that transition?
Absolutely. In fact, the principals and I were just talking about that this afternoon. So what we discussed was creating those opportunities for our teachers to, one, talk with, we always have vertical conversations. I mean, our teachers, as we transition kids, we make sure within our buildings that we have conversations about kids that are moving up or who have special needs or considerations in their learning. But what we're also asking them to talk about this time is the identification of curriculum that was difficult to teach in the spring or it was just compromised in that learning situation, so that the receiving teacher knows of existing challenges. And so, yes, there are plans for those conversations to happen. Part of that is just typical practice anyhow, but it's newly important in the current setting.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a few really quick questions. For, one for Dr. Williams. I didn't happen to see
Alicia?
Yes.
Sorry, can we wait and just ask Jill and Brad their questions? I'm trying to get the
Oh, sorry.
Different panelists off on there.
All right, yep, sorry.
Do you have anything for Jill or for Brad?
No, they've answered all my questions.
Anyone else? All right, there we go.
Can we let the principals go as well? They would primarily have
They would be with that, that would be great. Any questions from any board members? Do any of you have any individual questions for our principals? Okay, thank you all very much for being here tonight and for all the work that you're doing. It's tremendous, and we're deeply, deeply appreciative.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I am also going to ask if anybody has any questions of Ms. Smith, Lyson Smith, because I know she has a little one at home, and so she probably really does need to get off this call. And Lyson, I will just say, thank you so very much for your report. It was in-depth, it gave me a really good, I feel like I really understand what you all are working toward, and I can't tell you how impactful I think it is and how important I think it is. So thank you very much for your work. Any other questions for Ms. Smith?
So not necessarily a question, but I wanted to just really kind of echo what Marley said, Lyson. I was really super appreciative of your report and your work. And you really kind of, when I had my list of all the needs I kind of like identified, you know, people, you know, people who have like had negative impacts because of social, the racism, the bullying, the lack of social connection over the last couple of months, the quarantine, just the unsettlingness of this whole situation. I think that a lot of times, like, we forget, like, as adults, we're super unsettled by like what's going on, and that translates into our kids. I was really super appreciative of your report. So I actually don't have any questions, because you answered them all in the report. So thank you very much for your detailed information.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, anything for Ms. Smith? Great, thank you. All right, so moving on now, I'm sure the rest of you were like, wait, will it be me that I can get off next? So Ms. McMasters, I think, was that the next question, Alicia, that you had?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Sam, thanks for hanging in here with us for one of our marathons. I did want to ask you, though, for the coordination of the IEP teams, the various IEP teams, when should families expect contact to start happening? And I don't know what the restraints are there, you know, with folks who are working and not and what have you. But when should families start to see their contacts for the gifted team, the IEP teams?
Sure, the IEP teams will start to reach out to families that week of the 17th
Okay.
with specific information. We have had several communications with families already. But as just a general rule across the board, the intervention specialist, that case manages, the IEP will be in touch that week.
Well, that, I mean, I just have to say, that just doesn't quite seem like near enough time to address those. And maybe, I'm looking at this from an outsider in regards to what might need to be done, because you're not necessarily recreating the wheel, you're just driving it in a different, down a different path. I guess that just doesn't seem like enough time to me.
Do you mean enough time for families? I guess the teachers have been working all summer. So I will say that they have already put a lot of work and thought into what this is going to look like. And that work will continue up over next week. We have a couple of meetings, I have one tomorrow and one on Monday with teams of teachers. So they are already planning and putting that work in place.
Okay.
Thank you. So, and Sam, I know that Jill just talked about this a little bit, but the assessment of students, your special population students. And Dr. Miller, maybe this is a question for you. This, if we did distance learning, it does not preclude in-person assessment for IEP students if necessary, right?
No, it doesn't. As was mentioned earlier, we are not under a stay-at-home order, nor are schools under a closure to students' order. We can bring students in based on the needs of the students. We can bring staff in based on the goals of the school district as well. I mean, we're not violating any kind of orders. Again, the guidance is around the reduction of the gathering of large groups of people in a location. But, and we are not unique in this, most school districts are thinking about this and how to make this work. We need to be able to support the educational needs of our students. Sometimes that is in-person. Some of our most vulnerable learners are going to be the most challenged by distance learning, and we have to be able to meet their needs as well. So because we're not under an order to stay closed, to stay at home, nor are we under an order to close the school buildings to students, we do have the flexibility to bring students in as needed for either assessments or even instruction and support.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that. Thank you for clarifying that, because I think it's really important. Okay, any other questions for Ms. McMasters?
I actually just had one more. There was one that was actually answered by Dr. Miller about the in-person meetings. And that was the question I had, the, I didn't see it in the recommendation from anyone that Franklin County Public Health or Directive that the in-person meetings could take place. Ms. McMasters, thank you for hanging on the line again, and I appreciate all the work. The, I know with the special ed coordinator that we brought in, I'm sure that that probably has helped quite a bit, especially in these times. But the question that I have, and I'm not familiar enough with it, but one of the questions that I thought about was the, again, going to the accountability of the IEP and the following of it. Will that fall, especially with distance learning, will that fall primarily on the intervention specialist or especially with our younger students, the gen ed teacher, on overseeing that and making sure that it's implemented?
Just similarly to if we were in-person in school, it's a collaborative effort between the general ed teacher and the intervention specialist. But every student with an IEP has a case manager who's an intervention specialist or one of our therapists. And so their primary responsibility is the implementation of that IEP to make sure that it's followed and that students are getting the intervention that they need.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I thought in your presentation, one of the things that struck a chord in a positive nature with me is the clear learning plans. And I think especially for our special ed students and those that struggle even in person, that this challenge before them, I have confidence in you and our new special ed coordinator and our intervention specialist that they can get this job done. So I appreciate, I appreciate the work that you're doing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Ms. McMasters? Okay, thank you very much for joining us, and I think that moves us on to Dr. Williams.
Can I jump in first and I'll get out of the way?
Good, thanks, John.
Dr. Williams, I had some questions, and this kind of, as you might guess, is coming from my questions. And still, I'm not clear from the Franklin County Public Health and their guidance on extracurriculars being fall extracurriculars being canceled. And I don't know, the guidance that is being given by the Franklin County Public Health Department, what other factors are we looking at in making the decision to shut down all of extracurriculars for the fall? And is that something that is going to go along with whether or not we're in-person schooling or not?
And that's a good question, Mr. Burnout. There were a lot of variables and a lot of time that I chewed on this, because obviously my role is making recommendations, Dr. Miller, about this. And athletics is very important to me, always has been. And so I think that's a fair question. So let me explain the variables that I looked at making my personal. And I'll begin by saying, I'll certainly recognize that I'm a conservative by nature when it comes to risk-taking, especially when it comes to other people's children and their safety. So the things that we started looking at, this is before the order that came, I was looking at the, we were questioning when we were going to get more guidance from Ohio High School Athletic Association. We got very little, if any, guidance from them to watch. So I then looked at the Ohio Department of Health. They put out some guidance that we were waiting for some updates and changes. And for example, their definition They put out some guidance that we were waiting for some updates and changes. And for example, their definition, um, of contact sports. Let me, let me preface this. Uh, another thing for me when it comes to athletics and, and some, and any of people might disagree with me on this, but, I, I'm putting it out there, uh, as a reason for my recommendation. One is, I do believe that part of the extracurricular program, the athletic department is, it's, it's compet, it's competitive base. There should be competitions involved. Um, and so with that, that's, that's in the back of my mind also, if I'm being completely transparent. And again, that might, might not be agreed upon by everyone, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. And the Ohio Department, and the Ohio Department of Health did put together some guidelines so we could have, um, contact sports, uh, have access over the summer. So you start seeing the Carmen's crew playing basketball and professional sports and college sports could get back in there. But one of the, one of the things they talk about in their criteria for competition is that each student athlete has to be tested, I think, three days prior to a, a competition. And we kept waiting for that to, to change with, the school got closer, if they're going to move off that position, because there's no way that we could, we could do that. We, we, we can't, obviously it's pretty obvious, we can't test everyone before a competition. So our contact sports, just so everyone is clear, I think would be football, soccer, um, cross-country. And field hockey.
Harley, would you explain why you consider cross-country a contact sport?
I, I, that's not a definition I created. That's the definition is created, I think, by the Ohio High School Athletic Association, or maybe the governor's office. Might've been the governor's office when they were making their, they're giving their guidance.
I would, I wasn't trying to be aggressive. I was, I was thinking, I think that it's, it, it seems like it should just be a kid running and so it wouldn't be contact. But I have a child who runs cross-country in college and it's very contact oriented, like at the beginning and the end and, and anywhere in between, you're, you're very close to people. So I was just trying to clarify that.
Yeah. The reason, and I think that would be the reason why is because they group together when they start and they're jostling for position to the trails and they're not maintaining the six feet spacing that we, we know how important that is now. Um, and so.
Is wrestling in there?
Wrestling's a winter sport.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're just talking. Thank you.
The, what, what, what a sport. Um, the non-contact sports, um, to be honest with you, it was volleyball. Cheerleading, obviously. Well, even, I wouldn't say obviously because there were the stunting and things like that, um, involves distancing, but, um, if there were other things, if it was more of the spirit base, we could, we could certainly maintain the distancing. Um, volleyball and golf and, and, uh, boys and girls golf and, and girls tennis are a non-contact sports. And so we did, I, I did look at, this is all before the, the, the definition or the guidance that came out recently. We had conversations, we talked about, uh, and to be honest, I had, I have a difficult time. Most states consider volleyball as a contact sport because of the net play, uh, passing the ball back and forth, being played indoors, can't keep spacing. So I had a concern, I had a safety concern about that sport, um, with, just to be in transparent. The other two sports, uh, and cheerleading, I thought we could, you know, if there's no contact sport, there might be other ways we could promote cheering, but, that would be, I think it's so closely tied to the, uh, football's team. Um, not sure how that would work. So that left me with golf and, and tennis, girls tennis. And to be honest with you, I thought golf, um, it, it does lend itself to, play at this time. I mean, it, it's six, there, you can maintain six foot of distancing and, and things like that. What it, and, and girls tennis, I had a concern about doubles play, um, but I thought if, if things could be changed around and we could have singles play, that could be managed safely as well. But then, uh, as I was torn between that and it, and I was torn between, if, if we're not having school, we, we think it's not safe enough to have kids in the building, staff in the building. I did have a problem with saying it's, it's okay for these, golf and maybe a modified girls tennis team that, to participate as well. Um, and, and, and then that, I wasn't clear on a decision and I was struggling with that part of it, to be honest. And then is when the, uh, he's, I started seeing more schools were canceling, colleges were canceling, uh, seasons. And, and then when the governor, when the, uh, excuse me, the public health orders came out, uh, it just kind of solidified my position that I didn't want to go against, uh, if I'm struggling with the decision internally myself and I'm having the experts give me that, that guidance, I felt, uh, obliged to make my recommendation. And Dr. Miller, that we would, suspend, uh, all fall sports until we can get back into at least a hybrid setting and hopefully get some more time for certain orders and guidance to change if, if it does at all.
So a follow-up to that, uh, Dr. Williams and Harley, you know, I've known you for years and I highly respect your opinion. So, doesn't mean I always have to agree with everything, but I guess my question is, is, does the, does the OHSAA guidance at all play into your decision? Consider, I mean, I know that there, there's been no announcement made, uh, at least as of today with, with Governor DeWine, but, does, does that play into your decision? Uh, that's the first question. And then the second question is, the difficulty that I, that, that I'm finding with this is if, if golf and tennis and even cross-country, even other sports, figure out a way to do it to where they're socially distanced, isn't it better for our, our kids? And, and this is more of an opinion question than a, a fact question. Isn't it better for our kids to have something to look forward to rather than, well, you canceled school, now we're going to cancel all of fall sports. There's not going to be any curriculum, extracurriculars. And then does that start to bleed over into theater and the music, all these other, other, and I know those are more co-curriculars. But, so the first question is OHSAA guidance and then is it, in your opinion, is should it be all or none? All sports canceled or, or all sports play? There's no in-between in that recommendation?
Yeah. I think that, yeah, I, I understand that position. Uh, I can recognize it as a viable, uh, uh, different perspective. Uh, as I said earlier, I think it comes down for me was, I mean, I, I, I couldn't justify prior to this, um, based on what I've known and what, what I know, what I've learned in, in my committee work is that the contact sports, yes, to, to me, it just did not, um, seem reasonable for me to make that recommendation that they be allowed to participate. My struggle and my decision was golf and girls tennis more than anything else. Now, did Ohio, if, in the Ohio High School guidance, I think it would help a lot of schools if we could all, I mean, we, even in our league, we have, teams already doing different things. There's no continuity right now and there's no, and so we're kind of left to making decisions locally. And I, and I, where I get into a tough decision, I always do what I think is best. And, and, and so that's my recommendation with the understanding that your definition of best might be different. And that's, um, and I'm not the decision maker. I'm just someone who's making a recommendation. I'm trying to just share my perspective about how that was, uh, but, and to further answer your question, yes. I, I, I believe as everyone else, how important athletics is to these kids' life. And I realize with the full weight of my recommendation, the kind of despair that that might cause for students and their families to have.
No, and I, you know, I, I highly respect you and, and we've known each other for years. So, um, these questions aren't meant at all as personal. Because I know how hard you work. The, the question that I guess, the, the, the $64,000 question that, that I'm wondering is, if we shut it down now, fall sports for good? If, I don't know, say in, in the middle of October, we're back, uh, something happens, we're back hybrid. I guess my question, the question becomes, can we keep allowing the teams to proceed under safe guidelines, under the watch of our coaches and making sure that they're doing the right things? Of course, there's no guarantee for anything. But to allow them to continue to practice as if there might be a season or continue to at least have that outlet, is that, is that something that you considered as well? And, and again, uh, then that'll be my last question. Again, I, I appreciate, all the work and the, the guidance that you're providing to us.
No, I, I, I have no problem personally. If, I, I wish, I wish I knew the future too, on this. I'm, I'm a, I'm, I think our coaches and, and, uh, Athletic Director Goldberg have done a remarkable job with, and the coaching staff has done a remarkable job conducting those that are, been working and conducting their phase two practices with a phase two kind of, uh, level of work for our contact sport. We, we haven't had a spread in our athletic department and we're proud of that. I have, I have no problem personally with a phase two continue to work out as, as long as the, there's a very clear upfront that we, uh, are probably unlikely to have any competitions, um, especially in a contact sports. And, I think the other thing when it comes to the, um, the phase two, um, bringing back phase two would be the optics around, um, I did not want to, um, if, if, uh, the, the, the decision of going to distance learning did play into my recommendation that if we, as I said earlier, when I go, if we're not going to school, I didn't feel that was right. I didn't feel comfortable saying, but it's okay here. And, and that could be a right or wrong, but that's just, that's how, that's what led into my, my recommendation.
Dr. Williams, I appreciate, um, not necessarily, I, I understand, you know, suspending formal competition, but I can just tell you, I mean, I, I love literal gym rats that live in my house. And the isolation of going to a distance learning format, then having absolutely zero outlet was just sort of devastating to watch. And what I'm hearing from other families, uh, weighing in about sports also is that, that same sort of despairing thing that I saw personally in my own home. So I, I guess, if we're, I, I understand competition, but if we're able to still do practicing coaching that allows some sort of additional learning opportunity, because that's really what practice is, is additional learning. Uh, I, I guess I don't fully agree that it's a good idea. I mean, just, it just seems just absolutely is really difficult for me to understand this decision. Um.
If I could add, I would, I would echo this. This is all very difficult for all of us. Um, you know, and I think some of these questions go back to the question around liability. We have a guidance document that tells us what to do. We've been repeatedly told to work with public health.
Kim, can I, can I interrupt you and ask you a quick question about that? The guidance document that you're talking about for, um, which I'm thankful, very thankful to have. Uh, I'm just want to be clear, is the guidance content, uh, that we have from Franklin County say that they, we can't have any contact? Or does it say they can't have any practice at all?
So I have to pull it up and look at it again, but, but I can look at that in a minute. But what I was going to say is, I think I need to, I think th- this again came to us in writing on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And so we knew we had this meeting today. So we made the decision to suspend, I made the decision to suspend athletics until we could, one, get more information, get to a vote, um, for you. I, I believe that we need to get some more information from a legal standpoint to understand where we are.
Yeah.
I don't want to close anything. I want kids to come to school and do every single thing that they normally do. So I know we're talking about how we feel about it and I think that's really important because we have very strong, we all have very strong emotions about this because we want our kids to have all the things that we normally have. Um, but I also have to make recommendations that are, are, that keep us, in a position that we're not liable and, and, um, for any wrongdoing. And so there, uh, Ms. Mitchell, you have some really good questions earlier and I think some of this starts to fall into that. So what I'd like to do is to follow up with our legal counsel tomorrow and try to get some additional information and then, um, send that to you.
Sure.
So that you have it. Because I think, otherwise, I, I think that's an important factor that we have to consider. So let me get that information for you. I think that would help.
Thank you.
Can I throw something into the mix there as well, which it, it, it doesn't really help, but that's okay. And I wish I would have asked Mr. Mazzola this. Okay. So the way that I read the guide, the guidelines is, is that sports and extracurriculars, um, it says, recommendations to discontinue extracurricular activities such as sports banned and other activities during this period of remote learning. Where I struggle, I mean, okay, so and I, and I, I tend to lean more towards the, if they're saying we shouldn't do it, we shouldn't do it. But where I struggle is it doesn't really clarify that, like, how do I say this in the nicest way? Like my fall athletes would be thrilled to be on the football team, even if the football team never met and they just had to go and weight lift and train and turn in times and race each other. I think even that, like a little bit connection of I'm on the football team, whether or not we ever even meet, I think, I think there's a social benefit to that. I, I, I mean, I can't speak for anybody else's children of mine. And so when we're talking legal, like if we're consulting, like a legal standpoint, it's when it says you can't do sports banned or other activities, is it say you can't have them or they shouldn't meet? You know, I mean, I mean, it's like a fine difference, but I do think it like, it, there, there could even be benefit to, just like I said, knowing that you're a part of the group, whether or not they, so I just have to throw that in there.
100%, 100% agree with you.
I guess even if they don't meet, anyway, go ahead.
I, I just, I think it's something where we would be, um, benefited by getting clarification from the Franklin County, um, Board of Health, um, Public Health. And is that what you were saying, Dr. Miller, that you were going to go back from clarification from, from Mr. Mazzola?
I can do that. And also I, I want to consult with our legal counsel.
I think both of those are, that would be great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And Dr. And Dr. Miller, thank you for doing that. Just because I think it's really, really important for us to, to find, if possible, that, that balance in that medium of, um, weighing the most, um, the best decision from a health and safety standpoint. But I, I think of mental health as part of health and safety also. Um, and and that weighs very, very, very heavy for me. So it, it, but I also understand our obligation to, to mitigate liability and what have you. So I just, I, whatever you can find out that can help clarify that a little bit more, um, uh, I would really, I'll be really grateful in, in helping me, me make a decision.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, are there other questions for Dr. Williams?
I do have just one. Um, Dr. Williams, I did not happen to see, but I also can't see the small, the small print here. And I'll go back and look at the, um, the formal document, but will we be doing screenings for temperature screenings as students are coming into the buildings? It's that students and staff?
No.
Okay.
We, we're creating something called a Bexley Health Pledge that require, um, has students and parents conduct that at home before they enter the building and staff.
And that, will they self-report or they just are?
Right now, it's, right now, we're looking at different apps. If there's an app that can help plus log and track that information, but, uh, at the minimum, it would be basically on our system. And at the best, it'll probably be recording something in an app if we can find one where it's just started conversations a couple of days ago with a couple of vendors.
Okay.
The program and features.
Um, and I think we, we might be using a similar format at, um, the Vets Memorial. Dr. Williams, I, I'll, I'll check with them and see what app they're using and how successful that's been and, um, and I'll pass it on.
Our doctors on our committee have also talked.
Oh, yep.
It's just one point in time and not really, um, not efficient use of time with the, uh, taking of temperatures or other indicators we want to be looking for and hopefully getting recognized earlier.
Well, the reason I ask that is pretty much in every last one of my medical office buildings, we screen for temperatures as people walk through the door. So, and in my corporate office, before we come in, we screen, um, for temperatures. And we know that people do unfortunately send, hopefully they'll change their mind about that now these days, but people tend to send their children to school on that, on that bubble. that bubble, if you will. It's kind of why things do spread, cooties do spread in the schools. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, I think, Dr. Norris, do you have a question?
I wanted, yes, thank you. I wanted to say that I have really enjoyed being part of working with Dr. Williams on the ways in which we'll bring students back to school safely. And I don't think that that committee spent as much time on this question of extracurriculars. And so I I welcome the opportunity to work with the board and that committee on on that question because I think from an epidemiologic and public health standpoint, there are a lot of very safe ways to bring kids together for sports, for extracurriculars, and even for their classroom learning in outdoor, socially distanced, supervised, mask wearing, hand washing ways that will really enhance their entire well-being as well as their learning in all of those spaces. So I look forward to the chance to help to operationalize those things.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Williams, I wanted to ask you a question. I've seen a lot of questions about our HVAC system. And when, hopefully soon, we get back into those buildings, how up to date are those? And how much of, and Dr. Norris, she might have an opinion on this too, how much they can help in preventing any kind of spread in our buildings?
Well, when we had this in the spring, Ms. Reigenberry, probably in April, started bringing people out with HVAC consultants. And we've learned some terms and then one thing, we learned that there's a range between one and 16, what they call a MERV rating, the filtering, ability to filter. I guess the size of the respiratory droplets is something that might go through the filter. And in your HVAC systems will allow you a certain level of MERV rated filters. They all just don't fit on every single HVAC system. And when we did our research, I think they were recommending anything above an eight MERV rating. And we have, between our buildings, we have 13 to 15, with 16 being the highest. So all of our buildings have a 13 to 15 with the, what we understand, the baseline that's that was considered effective with this virus is a MERV eight.
So that's good news. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Williams? Okay, so I have several remaining questions for Dr. Miller. Are we, how's everybody else? I think that's, am I forgetting anybody else, Kim? That we need to check off or?
No, I think it's, you can let anyone, if you don't have other questions, I think it's okay to let everyone else go.
Really quick, I do have to put that plug in, Dr. Williams, Mr. Goldberg, everybody, all, every single coach who volunteered this summer to work with our students, thank you so much. Van Camp, Mr. Johnson, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. There you go. Okay.
And I want to also say that the work that Dr. Williams has been doing in all of these areas has just been extraordinary over the last number of weeks and really, I know, months. So I'm, I've had, it's just been really fantastic to work with that group and with his leadership have accomplished so much with the assistance of the doctors and epidemiologists. I want to just add one other thing, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Miller, but let me just, sorry about my cat.
I was, I've been waiting all night for the cat appearance, Victoria. Thank you so much.
The cats have been on my lap most of the night. I walked off a minute and I happened to have my mic on when he's back.
Thank you.
Anytime. So I just, Dr. Miller said something that was really helpful about the fact that we can get, we can use the buildings under the current, even if we're in distance learning, we have opportunities to use the buildings. I want to go back, and it came back to me when we were talking about the opportunity for maybe making, you know, some kind of practicing available. And this took me in another direction, so this doesn't have anything to do with the extracurriculars really, but it has to do with assessments. One of the, one of the reasons that I think getting back into the building is going to be super helpful to us if we can for some of those assessments is that even though we have, you know, in some cases, the ability to meet with students on a device, because we haven't been able to get those devices in that the BEF has helped us to and is, you know, busy, they made a huge commitment to purchase what we needed for this year and are beyond that committed to raising funds to give us the money to buy all of the devices that we need so that we can be truly a one-to-one district. Mr. Pettit has talked about how he has been able to sort of patch together enough devices from what we currently own in the building to make sure that families in middle school and high school who need additional devices can do that, but but we don't have enough and we're really relying on getting to one-to-one with the generosity of the BEF to get us there. And so one of the things that's going to be really important to us is getting, being able to use the building for some of those assessments that we just aren't going to be able to do because we're not one-to-one at this point. So I just wanted to reiterate that that being able to be in the building is super important for that reason. Or even just on the ground, as Harley keeps reminding me, we can do some things on the ground.
Thank you. I agree with that. Okay, yeah, so I guess, Dr. Miller, my questions are, I just have a few left, I think. One is, can you talk about the timeline around those nine weeks for a pivot? And what kind of decision, what went into that decision-making?
So when, when the, and when I say guidance, and this was, some of that was really around talks with our teachers and our teachers association about asking for some stability so that we're not pivoting multiple times during the year, that we would have the stability of the quarter. I did share with our BEA leadership today that I was probably going to be talking about this because we have had two weeks of downward trend numbers. And I checked out the information today during Governor Dewine's press conference. I listened in and if we continue this way as a county and as a state, we could be looking at almost five weeks of downward trend data. And I know that's a big if. If we were to get to the week before school started and we had five weeks and Mr. Mazzola talked about like kind of a four-week trend, I would still recommend that we start in distance because to pivot the whole instructional program again in a very, in very short notice, that's what happened to us in March and we weren't prepared for that. So I feel really strongly that even if we have some downward trend over the next few weeks, and I'm very hopeful that we will, that we would start in in distance. We've verbally talked about the nine weeks. I would have a very hard time if we were to go four weeks into the school year and we're continuing downward trend and we'd be told the guidance is you can go back, you could go to hybrid. I would have a hard time not making that change until the middle of October. I want to get our kids back into school as soon as possible. I also need to value and respect, and I do, and I appreciate the difficulty for teachers of making those shifts and so without enough notice. And again, I'm saying these are a lot of ifs, if we continue downward. But the nine weeks was about providing stability for families so they would know what amount of time they need to plan for. And it was also about some stability and consistency for our teachers. But if we were to get to the start of the school year and we're trending down, I don't want us to lose the ability to be flexible. That's one of the things we've had to do throughout this entire process is to constantly be flexible and adapt to the new information. Just as, and I know that Dr. Norris is still on here, so that's good. Back at the beginning of this, we were told not to, we didn't need to wear masks. And as they learn more about the virus, it became clear that masks actually were really helpful. So, you know, we didn't hang on to old information. We said, okay, we need to pivot our behavior because the information is different. And I feel it's the same here. And I want to really be respectful of the agreements that we had and the, you know, verbal agreements we talked about and the importance of nine weeks. But if we can get some downward trend data that could potentially have gone on for eight to nine weeks, I think we have to consider that. We keep talking about the mental health and well-being of our students in athletics, and I get that. I was an athlete, both of my children were athletes. I think it's really important that we have that, but there's a component of being in school as well. And so I just, my advice is we, my recommendation is that we start distance, but we really monitor this and be willing to be flexible and change if we see some sustained trends in the right direction.
Okay, I appreciate that very much.
Real quick, Marley, can I just ask a follow-up to that point? Would you need a week or two weeks to potentially be flexible enough to pivot to say a hybrid?
I think if we're seeing, if we would see downward trends, and again, I'm, I will say repeatedly, I am, this is not my area of expertise. I'm just, you know, but if we were to see downward trends from now until the time school starts, I think we should be able to say, okay, if in the next four weeks this continues, then we're going to shift and we can start preparing for that shift. So I think that would be something.
Now, you're thinking about, you are currently planning for a hybrid plan. I mean, you're, we're working on the distances, number one, right now, because we know that's how we're starting. But you have to continue to do the work about the hybrid because we're hoping we're going there, right?
Right, and that's why you see the plan that was presented includes all three of those learning plans because we knew that we needed to be prepared for all of them during this year. I, I mean, I don't know what will happen. I've, in one of our meetings, you know, it was suggested that we may not be all in at all this year. I'm gonna, I'm not going to give up hope on that, you know? I'm still hopeful that we'll get all of our kids back in to school. I'm hopeful that our, our community will, you know, do, not just Bexley, but Franklin County will do what we need to do to get our kids back in school because it is so critically important that children attend school in person. And so, you know, we've got a plan here that, as I'm looking at what's on the screen, it shows all three learning options. And so, yes, we're still planning for that.
And just to clarify, you will be at some point looking likely in the hybrid plan into cohorts of some sort, right? It seems like a lot of the information is coming back around.
Right. Yeah, Dr. Norris had mentioned that before and she just put in the chat. And so, yes, we'll follow up with her because we would need some more information about that. There's a complexity of that at the secondary level because of courses and because of the way students take courses. But, but I know she's offered her help to help us think it through and we're going to take her up on it because, you know, all of our doctors who've offered us help, I mean, if you offer us help, we will call you and ask you to help us. So I, I think that's something we need to investigate. But again, if we start in distance and, you know, and those trends continue in the right direction, we can start thinking about, okay, how could we make that another component of our hybrid plan?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, other questions for Dr. Miller?
I had a couple of questions on the hybrid plan and versus the distance plan. You know, we, in the last two and a half to three years, you've really used, we've done a good job of using our data and using that to make decisions, including our strategic plan and a lot of other things. One of the questions and why I asked and spent a lot of time with Mr. Mazzola is honestly, I read through this data and we're using the entire Franklin County, including Columbus, to make decisions for us locally. And the way, I mean, I'm not minimizing the COVID, but what I am looking at is the data for us in regard to the number of cases versus our population versus a number of other data points that are on the Franklin County Public Health. And the difficulty that I'm having, to be honest, is the issue that Franklin County Public Health is recommending every single school district in Franklin County to close or to do distance learning. With, with the number of cases that we have, even in our zip code, it seems, it seems kind of the question that I have for you, Dr. Miller, and I'm not being critical at all, and you know, I think you do awesome work. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what is, what is our obligation to follow a guidance document that is basically a one-size-fits-all? It seems, it seems to me to be not taken into consideration. I think he admitted this, this is not taken into consideration individual districts. So what kind of, what kind of data are we using outside of the Franklin County Public Health recommendation in regard to looking at COVID cases or trends or whatever locally versus Franklin County-wide? And, and I don't know if there's an answer to that question, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anybody else on the spot. I guess my question is, is what data are we looking at locally versus Franklin County-wide in regard to making a decision on distance learning versus hybrid versus all-in?
Kim, let me just interject there for one second and then you can respond, as I'm sure you will. I just want to say, by my way of thinking, I think that it's really important to use the data for all of Franklin County, including Columbus. Like, we don't, there isn't actually a bubble around Bexley. I mean, people, whether we're trying to limit ourselves, which hopefully we are, people work in different counties, they have family in different, or not counties, cities, all within our county. I think it, I think that's the only way to look at it, is, is our, is our entire county. I mean, you couldn't, I know, like, where do you stop that? Is it the whole state? No, it's probably not the whole state, but, but it's not just Bexley or 43209 that is affecting.
Well, that's what, I thought that's what he said, though. He said that the, the reported cases that they're using the data from are place of residency. So, so that's what I, that's what I'm trying to figure out is if we have 88 total cases in 43209.
Yeah.
If, I understand there, there's a proverbial bubble, but there's not an actual bubble around Bexley. But the, the data that I'm looking at from their website, and I spent a lot of time looking at it, it appears, I'm trying to get all the information to make a decision what's right for Bexley School District. And it's hard for me to accept a document from Franklin County Public Health that is not taken into consideration individual school districts. I guess that's, and I'm not putting anyone on the spot and I, and I, this is a decision. These are difficult questions. These are difficult questions, and this is on my six-plus years on the board. This is the most difficult thing to look at. And, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. I want to get the information before I'm making my decision and it, and it just isn't adding up to me. And so I guess what I'm, I'm struggling with, and again, this isn't on, I understand the predicament that we would be in with the Franklin County Public Health recommending something, although I'm not sure about any liability when it's a recommendation and not a specific order that's even enforceable. What data are we looking at locally for COVID that might change our mind or might flip us after the first nine weeks if we go distance learning? I guess maybe that's the better question.
I thought he was really clear about that. I thought he was very clear about what we're talking about is the positivity rate, the number of new cases in addition to the trend and the other six, seven, sorry, seven things that are marked on the state alert system. So those seem to me to be very marked, although I agree with you, it is troubling to me that you can't actually get, we. Although I agree with you, it is troubling to me that you can't actually get, we cannot actually get the data on like positivity rates and trend data from Franklin County. I'm not at all concerned about the fact that it's just Franklin County that he's talking about as opposed to Bexley or. Or New Albany or whatever, because I think I see a lot of interrelatedness. And I think COVID doesn't gonna, isn't gonna, you know, care about the geographical lines.
Right. And so, and, and again, again, I'm not, I'm not. I, I think these are good discussions to have and why we have public meetings so we can have these discussions in public. That's kind of the question going back to what I asked Dr. Miller. And, and again, I think it's.
Yeah, so sorry.
It's, it's, no, you're fine. I, this is curiosity about what. Are we, are we just going to rely on the Franklin County Public Health? Are we going to rely on, or the data that they, that at least that they make available? In making these decisions, whether or not it's after this first nine weeks or whatever. And, and again, I.
Kim, I, you know. What you rely on?
Yeah. Well, I get the local data versus, that's what I'm saying. We're relying on this data. But it appears that Franklin County Public Health is saying all school districts in Franklin County. As opposed to, should we be maybe taking a look at what we have locally?
Okay, so let's just jump in really quick and maybe our medical professionals can like weigh in on this. Isn't that their job to like? Collect the data and then interpret it for us? I mean, I don't, I, I personally don't feel qualified to interpret somebody else's data.
If, if I could add, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Norris to, to maybe weigh in because she's, I know. Engaged in research right now on this very topic. I think she was. Oh, offsite actually for a while or to do that. So when we as superintendents are meeting with Franklin County Public Health, Columbus Public Health is also there. And because of our unique geographic organ or position in Columbus. We're listening to them as well. And so they don't have jurisdiction over Bexley. But certainly, Dr. Roberts at Columbus Public Health. Her recommendations and guidance is also important. And in fact, when we had the meeting with them on Tuesday, it was both, both of them. As well as. Delaware and Licking County. So there were other health departments on that call as well. And. We, we, we heard from all of them. In, in terms of the, the data. I have to take my guidance from them because that, that is not my area of expertise. We often talk as educators, you know. By virtue of the fact that we're, we're public employees, you know. And everybody's gone to school, so everybody has an opinion about school. But, but there are things we know about educating children, teaching children that, that we have expertise on. And we appreciate when people value the expertise and experience that we bring to the table. They may not fully understand it because it's not their area of expertise. I have my taxes done by an accountant because that's not my area of expertise. And so we do rely on these agencies. Because of, that is what they do. So in terms of what data, I, I'm not going in and parceling it out. I'm listening to them. I'm, I'm looking at the information. I'm following along. We're talking to our own local. I mean, when we thought we could do the six feet with elementary. Dr. Norris, Dr. Brasky, some other epidemiologists gave us some really good information. I followed up with Dr. Norris. We learned new things and we said, okay, wait a minute, we maybe need to rethink this. And so we do lean heavily on these experts to help us understand what all of this data means. So that's, that's my answer is it's, we're also listening to Columbus, but I'm going to let Dr. Norris weigh in on this as well.
Thanks very much. You all are making really sort of excellent intuitive epidemiologic points, which is. One is the reason we can't rely easily on Bexley only numbers is that Bexley is really small. And luckily, COVID is not super prevalent anywhere. So we can't, if we had half the people in Bexley, then we could easily measure it. But Bexley's tiny and the number of cases is tiny. So, and then also to Ms. Snowden's point, people are moving beyond the walls of Bexley. So it makes sense to understand our local experience using the bigger numbers that we can get when we look at our county. And also it makes more sense in terms of people's actual risk of exposure. Because we're, we're, we're understanding it from a bigger point of view. The piece that I think is an opportunity for us in Bexley, because we are small. Is that we can have really quite tight management over our school system. I, I mean, you all do. You can make decisions about really fine level detail and therefore make the environment safe. When I have been working with Harley and really quite amazing committee on the implementation plan. The pieces in it make school really safe, a really safe place to be. One of the comparisons we've been making is like, well, what is it like when you walk into Nationwide Children's Hospital? You don't think you're going to get an infection of COVID there. And we're putting in the place a lot of the same practices. So. We can make it safe, but we have to make it feel safe. And right now there's fear about surging numbers. There's uncertainty about how plans would be implemented. And understandably, tons of change, things that were guidance six months ago are no longer the guidance today. And it's not because we, we've actually learned a ton and we can do things really quite safely. So then the work of this committee is to communicate. Outwardly, the ways in which it can be done safely. And to keep enhancing the safety of those things. So things like cohorting and how to do extracurriculars and all of those things. Some of which are, feel risky and some of which feel safe with regard to COVID and some of which feel risky. And some of which feel safe with regard to overall wellbeing. So I do think it makes sense to rely on Franklin County data to understand our epidemiologic context. I also would argue that this group can make decisions based on our tiny little town and our capacity to do things for our community. Because of the tremendous resources we have and the small number of people that we serve.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Dr. Norris, real quick, just as a follow up. Not so much the return to school, but what about extracurricular activities on, on, on? With the data that we have and that recommendation, because it didn't sound like. That there was a lot behind that, that recommendation, other than, well, if we're distance learning, we're going to recommend no extracurricular activities. Do you have a different perspective on, on extracurriculars versus return to, return to school?
I agree that there's, because we're, again, because we are a small community, we don't have to rely on. A kind of argument that we have to some, that like consistency, that a couple of times. I, we heard the word consistency. If we're going to be virtual for teaching, we have to be virtual for everything. I don't agree that consistency is like a higher good. And there was neither medical nor public health justification for that decision that I could hear. So. I think I'm advocating in all spaces that kids do have opportunities to come together. In supervised and safe ways for extracurriculars, including sports and theater and other things. And including school. And, and if we could move to a, a, a virtual learning that included multiple opportunities for kids to have. In-person face. Actually seeing their friends and not living as though we're all on our individual planets during this experience.
Thank you so much. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Okay. And I think Dr. Nalen maybe has a comment on that? For you?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to add, you know, when we looked at the AAP guidelines and the CDC guidelines. And when the AAP then came out and sort of regrouped with the education associations. You know, they said, yes, you have to take into account community spread, but you also have to take into account funding and resources. And so when Mr. Barno talks about how are we, how, this is a blanket statement for central Ohio, for Franklin County. And. Bexley has the resources and the funding. In order to make this safe. And I think that that needs to be taken into account as well. That we have the ability to make it happen. I mean, I almost wish that the. Public health could come and see a walkthrough of what. What the district has available and has put in place in order to make it safe. And then make a determination based upon that plus the local data. I know that that's not feasible, but I mean. We have the resources and we're willing to put the resources to it. And. You know, it's, it's different than other school districts in Franklin County.
Yeah. Interesting. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Nalen about that? Thank you for sharing those, that insight. Mr. Barno, did you have more questions for Dr. Miller?
No, I did not.
I hate that feeling. All right. Any other questions for Dr. Miller or anybody else from our board members? I will just say, since this is. Since this is just a special meeting for this particular purpose and our discussions about this. And we are obviously not voting on this tonight. What we often do in situations like this is try and give our administration some. Feel for. Our take on, on the issues that they presented us with so that they can then. Have the next week or so, well, until next Tuesday to. To kind of move a little bit with, with any of anything's direction that we. Fee, feel. That we need to give. Sorry. So. I don't want to have any vote tonight. We're not set for, for any vote tonight. But I will just give my personal opinion on a few things for the administration and I welcome our other board members to do the same. So. I think my thoughts, Dr. Miller, are that, one, huge appreciation to your whole team for doing this Herculean task. And two, I think we're really headed in the right direction. I love the balances that you've put in place because we realize that there's not a perfect answer to any of this. So it's, I think, such thoughtful consideration around how we might try and make this work. I'm pleased to hear that you feel like you have some flexibility or would like to discuss some flexibility around the. The numbers, if we see them dropping. As you say, you know, for the next month. I, I do like the idea of. Of maybe being able to get back in at some higher level. Of course, we would have to have firmly in place. Distance learning for those who couldn't come back in. And a whole plan for, for hybrid learning, which I recognize may not be possible in nine weeks. So. But I like the idea if we can. The other thing is that my two cents around athletics and extracurriculars in general. Is that. I would like to see. How creative we could be around that. I was struck by. The answers from Mr. Mizzola in general, you know, as an attorney, I guess I probably am at risk averse and liability averse. At a higher level, but when, so when I hear Franklin County say. You know, we do not recommend that you go back to school. I say that, I think, all right, that pretty much says to me, we can't go back to school. But I felt very supported in that, in that they gave very. I thought the data around it was really good. The, the. Five, six bullet points in their, in their guidance letter to, to you on Tuesday made a lot of sense to me. It showed a lot about where our current, we are, our community is currently with. With risk. So, and, and. So that to me made a lot of sense. But then when Mr. Barno was asking him about the extracurricular. What he kept saying was our thought is just around kids congregating. We don't like kids coming together. That to me is not as data driven as the other. So I am loathe to go against a guidance from our. From the public health. Department and in any way, but if there were a hitch in my thinking, it would be around the extracurriculars. So that's my thinking. Anyone else? I welcome, um, the next.
I'll go next. Cause I feel like, Marley, I'm pretty much in line with what you think. I, I am not inclined to, to. Take a, a public health guidance and say, oh, I think I know something that they don't.
Exactly.
Like I said, and I, and I'll even, I'll even go like one step further and say, I was like a speech therapist, like, you know, I collect the data that I need. But I'm not going to turn it over to somebody else to interpret it. I, that's my job to interpret it. So I'm like, I'm not ever going to be inclined to like take somebody else's information and interpret it, whatever. But that being said, I did think that his argument for the athletics and the extracurricular was weak. I still don't want to go against like a, a, a public guy, health guidance. But I guess I feel like that's where maybe some of the advocacy is, is should we be asking more of those questions about like, well, where can you? If you're gonna, if you're gonna make this recommendation, we'd like to see some data behind it. I mean, I don't know if we can compel them to do that, but I, I guess that's like, Dr. Miller, I'm so sorry to say this because you have nine million things to do. But as your superintendent group meets with him weekly, I would love to know if other districts are having the same questions that we are, the same conversations that we are. And we can get more. Hard information from the health department on like, on athletics and how, if, if there, if, if there's any more data to be had or there's any more interpretation. And, and that being said, and then also, Dr. Miller, as you suggested, following up and asking our legal, like, I, like I said, I'm in line with doing. You know, I, I don't want to go against. Any, any specific recommendations, but I also think it's okay to question those recommendations and say, can you give us some more data? Or have you had, can you give this some more thought? Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. And Michelle, I just, sorry, I wanted to add one more thing that you made me think of when we think of athletics, Dr. Miller. The, the golf part of it and tennis really strikes me as, you know. Even in March, I remember Governor, you know, Governor DeWine's press conference saying, you can be on the golf course. You can play, I played tennis all summer and I played doubles and we have like a whole system that the USTA has put out where you put your name on it. Nobody touches the same ball. I mean. People are being creative about things. And so I intuitively understand football being a problem much more than golf. And so the blanket statement makes me uncomfortable as well. Okay, sorry.
I'll go next. And I just want to add to that discussion on the extracurriculars, which is that. I think, I said this earlier, and I think this is what Dr. Miller has pledged to do is to get some more guidance on it. If the guidance that Michelle pointed out from the Franklin County Public Health. You know, is just discontinue extracurricular activities and it's just, I wish we had the folks from public health still with us. When we started to have that conversation, because I'm guessing that they can provide some more meaningful guidance about, about it. And so I'm, I'm really in favor of getting that additional guidance and, and. Perhaps having another couple conversa, you know, getting the information from Dr. Miller. After she has the opportunity to have a conversation with folks from public health on that. I really appreciate also the concept of flexibility on the commitment for nine weeks. You know, the conversation has been that if the numbers decrease for four weeks. We might be in a position, you know, at some point to shift over to hybrid learning. And like everybody, I would like to have our students in the schools. I want to be careful and say that we should look at, you know, all kinds of guidance at that time as well as, you know, the way we are now too. And not. Leave the impression that if we see four weeks of reductions in new cases, that we're automatically going back into the schools. Cause I think what we've found is that there's sometimes information that we need to pay attention to that we didn't think about when we first. You know, it's easy to say from here, if we get that, we'll go back in, you know, after two weeks or three weeks or whatever it is. But I just want to be cautious and recognize that we'll be getting guidance and information from lots of different sources at that moment as well. So I think we can't say with certainty, but I like the, the idea of flexibility on that. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, I really don't have tremendous more to say than what my colleagues have already stated. Dr. Miller, I really don't have tremendous more to say than what my colleagues have already stated. So I'll reserve any further comment or questions after you find some, find out some more information. I do want to thank you and your team and that task force for the unbelievable job and task that they have undertaken. And I think sometimes that's lost on, on folks when they get entrenched on or entrenched in their opinions or their fears, their wants or desires. But I think what we have is a community, a nation, a world that's all experiencing something in such a way that, you know, sometimes civility and grateful, having a grateful heart sometimes is often forgotten. And I just want to extend my gratitude for the work that was done and the, the attention to detail for not succumbing to the pressure of just coming up with something and putting it out quickly, but to be thoughtful and mindful about every area. And regardless of whether or not we all agree or not, or whether someone else agrees, it is not lost on me, the work and the time and the attention that was dedicated to this effort. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And just briefly, I totally agree with Alicia. And, and I can't say enough, Dr. Miller, your team, and then, and what you've done, and then all the things that we've experienced just since that first was that May 18th meeting, let alone the fact that you guys have been de, the original shutdown. So the back to school plan, everything that you guys have done has been unbelievable. And, and I think extremely important for our, our, our community. Even if we don't end up agreeing across the board, is important to have. And, and the respectful nature upon which things have been handled here, I think, is a commendation to, to your team, but also to my, my colleagues on the board. The, the respectful nature in which we discuss things, even if we disagree and if we strongly disagree, we, we seem to, I, I see it in all four of my colleagues of, of being extremely respectful of others, others' opinions. And again, if we don't ultimately agree on everything, that's okay. Because if we're respectful and you listen and you keep an open mind, that's the most important thing. So not only to appreciate the administrative efforts, but my, my colleagues as well. So with that said, I, I, I agree with what Ms. Snowden said, a lot of the questions, and I didn't mean to be cross examining Mr. Mazzola. I appreciate his time, but it, with this important decision, I wanted to make sure we got as much information as the basis of the recommendation as anything. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Am I unmuted there?
I want to add just one last little, and so, because I feel like here at the end, we talked a lot about the fact of, you know, we're looking forward to getting back to school or whatever. But I do have to say that I am super pleased with the way for the, the, the plan that you've wrote out as far as the distance learning piece too. And specifically, the fact that it's going to be a lot more synchronous and it's going to be the Bexley, our educators leading the program. I know that there's been a lot of work to have, make that happen. And I'm super appreciative for that piece too. All right, now I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I, my feed went out for a minute. So I was panicked. I hope it didn't show, who knows? Okay, so I think that is it for our item two A, which means we are now, oh, I thought I found it. I was struggling to find our language to take us into executive session. And Dr. Miller or Mr. Smith?
Yeah, what, what I'll do is I will just, if I can, we'll just jump to our last board meeting of July 7th.
Thank you.
Executive session. And I know that, that
That language is there.
There, so.
Thank you. I want to make sure to be legal. All right. So I need a motion, a motion to hold executive session. And this would be a resolution under Ohio Revised Code 121.22. So that we can hold an executive session for the purposes of employment and compensation of a public employee or official. So can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And so all in favor of executives going into executive session, please signify. Oh yeah, thank you. Roll call vote, Mr.
We want to make sure we, we get it all.
So, Mr. Smith, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Bono.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Snowden.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so now we are in executive session and for our, are going into executive session for our community members who are on this Zoom meeting. This is just a meeting that we can hold just as board members, as you have heard, under strict guidelines. So we will be discussing public employees, employment and compensation. And we will come out of executive session after we've had a chance to discuss that and vote on it under item four D. So we'll move off of this platform at the moment and we will connect back in to vote. I don't have an idea of when that will be. We, our discussion will just take us where it will take us. So, but we will sign back in and make sure and have a vote in public. So that's where we all now, board members, if you could sign out of this meeting and go over to the next meeting, which is our executive session that Mr. Smith sent us earlier.
Three, two, a three minute plug in. Can I throw a plug in? Like, we give ourselves like three or four minutes to, we chug into the
Oh, yes, exactly. Yes, yes. Let's give ourselves five minutes. Thank you so much. Okay, thanks. All right, bye.
No, thank you. I'm asking if we had John and I did not see John, but I do see Trevor the cat, so.
We just need to get him a big old bushy mane. He'll be ready to be the lion.
All right, well, we'll wait for Mr. Barnau for another minute.
It was funny when I was coming off of quarantine, it was like, okay, I finally get to go into my buildings. I've never been more excited.
Back into work.
To go to work. I was like, hey! Although I think it might have been a function to get away from the kids. Mommy loves you best.
Kyle, are you texting with John? Do you know if he's?
No, I haven't heard from him. Here he comes.
Okay, there you go. You're on mute, John.
Okay, sorry, my computer's overheated twice.
Oh, gosh. Okay, well, I will let you, we'll begin with this pretty quick. We are back out of executive session. Kyle, do I need a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes.
All right, can I please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, no roll call, right?
Um, going out of executive session? No, I don't think you'd need to. Just a voice vote.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. So we have had the opportunity to discuss resolutions for A, B, and C. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve item 4D.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Um, so that has personnel involved. Mr. Smith, should we do a roll call vote on that?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes. Thank you. All right, that motion passes. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. We'll take that.
That was a little too gust, though. Sorry.